And. Gail Hunter is responsible for the minutes of the meeting, which she does such a remarkable job. I'll come back to my question about. If there's any. Public input on items that are not on the agenda. Okay, hearing none. We'll start first with a continuation of the public hearing on conduit construction on Church Street for National Grid. And I need a motion to reopen that continued here.
So moved.
Second.
By Ms. Jakes, seconded by Mr. Brown. When we last met, we had asked National Grid to respond to a number of questions. I don't know if everybody's seen it. I saw a memo from Chuck. With the answers to those questions, but perhaps you could just. Go over the. The items that we were asking about last time, which was timeframe from beginning to end for the construction. Time frame for initiation of the construction and. When it will be. Completely closed up.
Good evening, everyone. This is Nilu from Leidos Engineering, representing National Grid today. So as continuing the hearing on the Church Street conduit installation, some of the questions that were asked at the last meeting, I will just go over them. So the job, this construction will be completed by contractor. And the contractor is not, the work hasn't been awarded to a particular contractor. What time of the day will this work begin and end? It typically starts at 7:00 AM and it will finish up and wrapped up for the day at 3:00 PM. The proposed start date, I know it was mentioned that fall is the requested or the early spring and avoid the construction during the busy summer season. So we will look to schedule the work for the next fall possibly. But if the schedule allows, we can look to do it in spring depending on when the project goes out to the bid to contractor. And we will avoid doing the work as mentioned for the summer months. We will have the contractor to apply for the road opening permit to the city. So they're aware of when they can expect this work to take place. This, the question again was how will the contractor work the install? Will they at 50 feet or 100 feet section at a time and close up trenches? Or will they open the entire section covered with plate plates and fill in trenches? After the entire project is complete, there will be no open trenches left. Trench to be backfilled or plated overnight when they're done with the day for that. Will there be a traffic management plan? Signage will be installed and all these details will be used to reroute traffic around the worksite and contractor will provide that. Which side of Church Street will trenching begin on? That to be determined by the contractor, the best approach, but we will notify DPW 24 hours prior to the start of construction. And then the last question was, what is the duration of the project on Church Street start to finish? Again, we'll follow up with duration time, which will include permanent patch. It, we typically install the temporary patch and then return back and overlay the permanent patch after, within the two weeks of completion. So I think I've covered all the questions that were asked. If, are there any additional questions?
I'd just like to make a comment for the public that's listening to this particular hearing. That this construction will cause Church Street to be closed. From. Union Street. Back to the power plant. During the time that construction is underway. And so all entrances to the town hall and to the Legion and to the Mason's Building. Water treatment plant will be done on the other entrance to the right of town hall. Some nice music, but we probably should.
I know, I'm not.
Wondering if that was my hearing aid. Jeff, I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
The, the comment regarding to whom the application will be submitted. I believe you said it was the city, but did you mean that will go to the DPW?
Um, I believe it was the road opening permit for the entire work, right? I, I believe it would be submitted to the city just, and then we would notify the DPW 24 hours prior to the construction.
So do you mean the town?
The town, I'm sorry.
Okay, that was confusing me. I know, I'm like, wait a minute, what city?
No, 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 to, to the Manchester town, sorry.
Becky, I can just jump in and help out a little bit here is I talked with Jeff Castro in their office and you know, typically we would, you know, any other contractor for any other job, when they're in the town streets, they submit a road opening permit to DPW. And so I or my, you know, my office will approve them with conditions. And many of the things you guys are discussing are things that I will make sure get into our conditions for opening the road. And so, and that will include, you know, notice to me and notice to the town and I can alert others if needed. But so that's, so I did talk with somebody at National Grid about that. So that's, that's now kind of in the, in the works pending your approval to me.
Thank you, Chuck. Just my last question, Jeff, would be to Chuck and just saying, so you're comfortable with how this is being presented?
Yep, we'll make it work.
Thank you.
And one of the conditions, Chuck, that. The road opening permit will have is to return the road to the same or better condition than prior to the construction.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
I've got a question. I got a question, Jeff.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so and perhaps this should be directed maybe to Chuck. Do most of these contracts in general have a timeframe that of elapsed time when they're being done? In other words, it will be completed within one month or two months or whatever.
So my, my general conditions are that they have 90 days, the permit is valid for 90 days and they have to notify DPW. You know, usually I give us 72 hours before construction, just so, you know, they're not showing up the day of and we're.
All right. Well, my question is more, how long is there a construction zone there? In other words, Nilu does not know how long this is going to take place. She will know that. And I'm just wondering if in the contract that you, you finally arranged with them that there is a window of time during which there will be construction, active construction.
So we usually don't micromanage to that level, but you know, they, it's kind of understood that they'll, you know, once they mobilize to the site, they're there until the work is done. You know, in this case, I would expect, talking with Jeff earlier, you know, I, I'd expect them to take a week to, to do the conduit and whatnot. And you know, maybe if they run into issues, it takes, you know, they're into a second week, but I would not expect anything longer than that.
All right. I mean, that's, that's no problem. I just don't want to see a construction zone there for two or three months.
And I understand. We would, yeah, we wouldn't allow that.
Yeah, that, okay. We're in your hands on that.
Don't be a varga. Thank you. Greg, I had one question for you. If this goes to next fall, does that in any way interfere with the beginning of the? Culvert construction?
I'll jump in on that one. I think it's a little too early to tell. Just, we haven't, haven't received the funding yet for that. So it's a little hard for us to plan a year out. Where that will be, you know, if everything went perfectly, you know, maybe we would have a contractor on board for the culvert, but in no way do I expect them to, you know, be, have a, you know, a work zone set up in the culvert gone by, you know, October. I think that would be a little ambitious. So we'll, hopefully we're working towards that and, you know, we'll definitely stay in touch with National Grid on.
Just so, so that National Grid knows, we're trying to get, we have a major construction project coming in. It's going to affect that, that whole area. And we would really like to have this done before that happens. As much as you can push it into the spring, that would be the best. Okay. Yes, Anne?
Two questions. Chuck just said that he ordinarily gets 72 hours notice and this is saying 24. Should we make it a condition? And the, the second. Is there's a cluster of condos that's only accessible as far as I know by Church Street. How will those people get in and out of their houses?
Chuck could answer this, but my understanding, Anne, is that they're going to close up the site every day with backfill and. Steel plates. So. People may not be able to access their driveway or the parking area in those condos. During the daytime, but they certainly will at night.
Yeah. So it'd be our expectation and I can make this clear and when they do the road opening permit that the, the site is a site during the day when there's active construction, but they would, you know, the, the street would be open in the evenings and, you know, when work's not taking place, they won't be stockpiling any materials, you know, in the, on the sidewalk. You know, they might have stockpiling in the parking area, in town hall parking area, but not, not, you know, people's private property for sure. And they would have access to their private property throughout the construction.
So they have to get out of their houses by seven in the morning?
Uh, well, if they're, if they're, you know, if they're, if they're actively working in front of their driveway, then yes. You know, but that will only be certain areas and they'll be able to, you know, discuss with the, just like what we're doing on Forest Street now. You know, they, people are coming and going as they need to, to their private property. And it's just a matter of working with the contractor when they're directly in front of their driveway or house or whatever. So that, I would expect that to happen here as well, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I'd like to. See if we could bring this to conclusion. Can I get a motion to, unless there's another board question? Any public questions? Okay, I'd like to get a motion to close the hearing so that we can vote on this.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Ms. Harrison and seconded by Mr. Brown. Quick poll, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, we're now out of the hearing phase and we need to vote on. The granting of the permit to do this and I need a motion for that.
Jeff, I'll make a motion to approve the National Grid's construction work on Church Street as presented in the packet.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Mr. Brown and seconded by Ms. Harrison. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, vote, Mr. Bowling? You're muted.
Did you get my S?
I got it now. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
And Mr. Barton Turner votes yes. Okay, so that's, that's it. You have your permit. You do need to do the application with Chuck Dan. Right prior to construction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a second public hearing. This is a liquor license request for 26 Central Street. From Mama Luke LLC. And I would like to have a motion to enter into a public hearing for a liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Harrison, seconded by Mr. Bowling. Roll call, vote, Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Barton Turner votes yes. Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Okay. You had information in your packet regarding this license. This is. For public purposes, this is 26 Central Street, which is the previous location of Black Arrow. And. Basically. I have one question for the applicant. This license would run until the end of this calendar year. And then have to be renewed. So you'd be paying for the license twice. If your plan for opening is prior to the end of the calendar year, we can do that or we can start the license on January 1st. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that's my question to you.
So we prefer to start the license effective January 1st because I believe that the ABCP probably will not actually approve the license for at least 60 days. It's been taking quite a bit of time.
So you don't want to pay for a full year's license for like two weeks worth of time? You don't want to pay for a full year's license for two weeks worth of time?
I mean, you know, it is Mary Ann's money, whatever. So by the way, Jill Mann, LEO Council for Marion Wood, who is the principal proprietor of Mama Luke. And DBA Boobird.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mama Luke, Marion. Okay, so. Are there any other questions on the board?
I have one, Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
What will the hours of operation for serving liquor be?
So I'm going to actually ask Marion to unmute herself and to give you those hours, Marion Wood. Here's the select board, please.
Well, I was going to apply for the license that would be the most advantageous that you offer in Manchester. So if you serve alcohol till, I think the license grants, usually grants till midnight. So I would want to exercise that on some occasion. We probably will close earlier, but I think that, you know, we'll probably close and stop serving food around 10:00. Or, and start serving food in the morning around 11:00. But I know that. So I would like to, I would like to apply for the application that, you know, says I can serve till midnight. That was there previously as well.
So basically, we're looking for the liquor license to be from 11:00 till 11:00 AM until 12:00 PM.
How many days a week, please?
It would be, it would be Sunday through. Saturday.
A pass to Fallon.
So seven days.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Eli, do you have a question?
Yeah, Marion, what's the motif of the restaurant?
Well, the restaurant's name is Boobird. I will probably have a little bit of a traditional, more classical look like a going back to the building being from the 1880s, 1890s. I, it's going to have, so it's going to have more of a traditional look and it will have healthy salads, healthy sandwiches. Everything will be made in-house. I'll be adding pizza and, you know, just other items that hopefully people feel good about eating and they feel, don't feel bad after they eat and they can go home and feel good about themselves.
And there will be a takeout component, right?
Yes, there will be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, open it to questions from the public. Hearing none. We need to conclude our hearing and. Vote after we conclude our hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Harrison, seconded by Mr. Brown. Roll call, vote. Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Barton Turner votes yes. Okay, so I need a motion to grant a liquor license to Mama Luke. LLC. Between the hours of 11:00 AM and midnight. Sunday through Saturday. At the location specified in the application.
May I make a friendly amendment?
We haven't even got a motion yet, so we need to get a motion first.
Well, that's right. Okay. I just, before.
Go ahead.
I need somebody to move what I just said, so we can move on to the friendly amendment.
All right. So Jeff, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for Mama Luke, DBA Boobird for the hours, the aforementioned hours. And at the location in the application.
Second.
Thank you. Now, Becky, did you have more that you wanted to add to that?
Nope, John covered it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board?
Do we need to specify that the license will begin January 1?
Thank you.
Yes.
That's, that's a friendly amendment. I hope that's acceptable to you, Mr. Brown.
It is.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions, concerns, roll call, vote, Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
The chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Very much. You have your license and good luck with the restaurant.
I'm gonna meet it.
Great success.
We look forward to seeing everybody at Boobird.
Yes, I hope so. I hope so.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good night. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is BOs policies. Last meeting, we. Divided these up and. Took the first half of numbered policies, which is clearly not the first half of all the policies, given the amount of reading that's involved in each one. And. You've had a chance to, to take a look at those. I'm really not wanting to go through each of those policies that you reviewed tonight. I think what we have now is at least a knowledge of what the task is that's ahead. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to try and frame. A. A path for doing this review that doesn't become cumbersome in our meeting process. That would be maybe perhaps a separate meeting. With this as a single agenda item. I know this is a great public draw to review BOs policies. But we, we do need to do some of this work publicly, obviously. We could also do a task force or a small group. Working with Greg to. Identify policies that need to be. Updated, retired. Replaced. So. I, I welcome any suggestions from the board as to. Related to a path for accomplishing this task. And before I go any further. I want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to Anne Harrison for digitizing the first set of these. It made the review and keeping track of reviewed comments much easier. Thank you so much, Anne. That was a lot of work and I appreciate it a lot.
I wish I were better at handling headers, but I'm glad we have. At some point, I'd like to discuss format issues. Perhaps we just need to, I could come up with some recommendations. Should we break it into a doc, into a group of individual documents and pull them together with a, with a table of contents? Or should we leave it as a single large document? Does it make sense to change it so that they are all in approximately the same format? That sort of mechanical issues that I didn't feel ready to take on. But I'm willing to implement, assuming we get agreement on, on how it should look.
Sure. Okay.
The other that I'd like to suggest is that we take. Make a policy, make a, agree to take on two or three policies at each meeting and just work, work through it slowly rather than taking a whole day. Because some of these do require some thought. And some legal opinions, I suspect. And, and pulling off a four hour meeting where we just rush through it is going to make a mess, in my opinion.
That was not what I meant by doing a separate meeting. What I. My suggestion about that was to offload it away from other agenda items so that we could focus on these policies. I don't think that we could cover even a portion of what we did for tonight in one meeting. In my review, I came up with 34 comments and suggestions. For the first. Section of policies that were reviewed. So I, I, I'm not thinking about rushing this, but I do want to get. I do want to get ahead when going on it. What do you think about a work group?
I'd really be part of a work group. Accept comments, try and integrate them, check with somebody who actually knows how things are supposed to work.
One advantage to a working group is I did see that there were some categories that needed to be addressed and themes that showed up multiple times. So for me, there were a number of places where I wondered whether state law had changed and obviated or overridden some of the policies. So a bunch of them to me needed to have some legal opinion. Not all of them, but a bunch of them. A bunch needed small generic updates because the structure of our government changed some. And so I think a working group actually could chew through. A bunch of that. a bunch of that more efficiently than going through and repeating that process in full board meeting or submitting several full board meetings. So the output of that could be a preliminary set of recommendations distilled down a bit. And then we could do some longer meetings. And I would be willing to work on that as well.
Any other comments about process?
How many are you looking for on the working group?
Well, we're limited to two.
Exactly.
Plus Greg, because if we go to three, then we have to
Open meeting.
Have to do an open meeting.
Yep. Thank you.
Somebody else wants to besides me, that's fine.
Okay, any other comments about process? So my understanding from what's been said so far is that the idea of a working group is appealing to have them review and consult with Greg and perhaps town council on certain legal statuses to develop a format. And to report back to the full board. Is that the consensus of the group? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay. All right. This is going to be a, a long, a long project. And what I'm thinking about in terms of Anne's comments about plowing through them is that we, we take a chunk and work it and then have a full board meeting so that they're revised and in place and the format is in place. And then take another chunk and we could rotate through in terms of who, who the working group was, working with Greg on this.
Question, question, Jeff, so is the intent that the working group might work through several of these? Well, I mean, work, work down the list and periodically we would put on an agenda for our, our regular meeting to review two or three of them. That the working group has kind of pushed through and said, this is our best guess here.
That's one way to do it. Another way to do it is to have work and do it as a, as a dedicated meeting.
Which would be a separate meeting, yeah?
Yes.
The working group might come up with an opinion on that after working through it a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, so the question then is how do other board members who have read this material get their comments into the working?
If you're making comments on an electronic version, you know, turn on review and, and email us. Email would be my suggestion.
Okay, so, so do it with track changes and and submitted to the group and the group can review the track changes.
I'd rather do that than take dictation.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. I'd like to set up a frame around which policies and what constitutes a small group of policies to review before we come, before the working group comes back to the main board. Any thoughts on that?
I figured we should take a pass on essentially all of them before we I think, looking for large categories and determining to the best of our abilities, how many of the policies fall into a particular category is whether or not there are 14 that need simple minor updates or I'd rather have that entire collection done upfront. So I think a first pass overall would probably be warrant.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. A first pass overall, meaning all the policies?
Yeah, by the work.
I think what Eli is trying to say is that there are policies that overlap. And unless we've gone through the whole set, we're going to do something and then discover that later on there's something else that we should have included.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think about input from other board members to the working group. I mean, I think most of us would be prepared to do our track changes input to you on the policies that were reviewed for tonight. Do you want to wait to get started until you have all the policies reviewed by all the board with their suggestions to you?
Jeff, if I may?
Yes, Becky.
Just when I was going over them, it, it, it just seemed to me that, that an awful lot of the policies need to be looked over by somebody who can compare our policies to current Massachusetts bylaws. There were a lot that I guess took, took guidance from that. And just even some that were written so long ago that are they even valid today? And that's why I was, I think that if town council takes a look at it, they might find things that we, we might end up poring over that we really shouldn't be.
I'm a little bit hesitant to give the entire packet to town council because the cost of having town council review this would be extraordinary. I think it's better if we could say we've got questions about, the working group has questions about these in consultation with Greg than have every single one of these looked over. Clearly, policies that were written that where the board was constituted as the zoning board. Board of Selectmen was constituted as the zoning board before we had a zoning board. Those kinds of things need to be changed. But the, the issue, the issue is, from my point of view, is not to dump all this in town council's lap and ask them to call it out.
Who's talking?
Can I, can I please ask the people who have joined the meeting mute themselves when they come in? That, that would be helpful. Thank you very much. So I, I'd like, I'd like to just get an understanding from the two people who have said that they, they'd start as the working group. You want to see all of our comments on everything before you start?
I would like to see your comments as, as they become available. I think Eli and I can make progress without having heard everything from everybody until we get a handle on what we're doing.
Okay.
But we would, I would like to see anything that anyone has that they, they are willing to share.
Okay.
I, I, I think Greg will be pretty important here. As I went through this, it seemed there were a lot of areas where is, you know, the, the process, is this in fact the practice? Is this what's going on? And we're not in a position to judge that. Greg really is, and maybe in some instances, he's got to go to other folks and say, is this really what happens?
And what, is, is this what should be happening?
Yes, yes. I think, I think that's, that's the bulk of what the, many of the issues are here, I think. It's a significant, significant number of them.
Okay, so reasonable timeframe. Report back on December 6.
What date did you say?
December 6th. It's our first meeting of the month of December.
I figured we can certainly report back before then.
I'm not expecting, no, I'm not expecting it to be done by then. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, report back in the sense of checking in. This is where we are. This is where we're finding issues so that other board members can have input on, on resolving those issues.
Yeah, that's an easy commitment, commitment to make.
Anne? Okay. Greg?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, so the frame is this, that Anne and Eli will work with Greg to review the policies as a whole that other board members will put their input in on the policies that they've reviewed already and will continue to review the policies so that in about four weeks, at least three or four weeks, all the policies, all the policies that you've reviewed have been sent off to the working group. They'll be back on December 6th to talk to us about what's happened. Why they questioned their judgment about volunteering for this. And, and finally to talk to us about what's the, the overall time, timeframe and strategy will be. Okay? I don't think we need to vote on that. We've got a consensus of the board and we can proceed. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Jeff, is there a, well, maybe I should ask Anne and Eli, is there a time where you'd like to have, but you just want, you just want comments fed out to you as we go through this, but you'd like all of them by when?
You don't have to send in anything if you don't want your opinion considered.
All right, well, I'll, I'll assume that you want everything by
That's to set a fire under you, John.
Two to three, two to three weeks at the most.
Okay. All right.
Anything, anything received after December 4th is not going to be considered.
Oh, well, sure.
Okay, we are actually tracking pretty close to time. Any other comments or questions about that, about the policies and the policy review? For the public to understand, we've taken a trip way back in history in, in reviewing policies to the time when the Board of Selectmen did everything. There was no town administrator. There were three people on the Board of Selectmen. And these policies still exist and they still govern what the Board of Selectmen is doing. So we're reviewing them to update them and bring them into the, the current configuration of town government and current configuration of the Board of Selectmen and other boards that have taken on responsibilities the Board of Selectmen used to do by themselves. And that's, that's why this is a pretty important task in terms of having guidelines for future boards to be able to access the policies, understand the policies and operate under the policies. All right, it's now 16 minutes past and our next item is Fall Town Meeting, which is scheduled for 7:20. So I'm going to jump to the consent agenda for a moment and ask if there are any questions on the consent agenda that people want to pull out for any discussion.
Yeah, I had sent one comment to Greg on the water utilities fact.
Okay.
Do you want to go through that or do you want to pull it out and deal with it next time or what? Want me to outline what the comment was?
Yeah, can you just give me an idea what the comment is?
Yeah, so it was about the consent decree.
Yep.
And I was hoping to put a little bit more detail around that in the language of that.
Where are you in the document?
I slipped this out for the, you know, last center, but we did a county state in Massachusetts where we replaced significant amounts of sewage piping infrastructure and is, and is reviewing the restrictions of the consent order. We are hopeful the consent decree will be lifted in the near future. That paragraph. Let me switch to a different view.
It's, it's on the top of the second page.
Got it.
Thank you.
And you wanted to do what to that, Eli?
I wanted to make it a little bit provide a little bit more detail because we actually have done quite a bit there and I wanted to make it clear. So for example, in 2016, I think it was, the town met all the state's outstanding requirements for resolving the consent decree. State reviewer status remains pending. In 2020, the state asked for updates on some of the status reported by the town in 2016 and the town is again waiting for the state's review to complete. Is that, did I get the dates reasonably accurate with that, Greg? That we did complete in 2016, what the state was asking for originally, right?
The CWMP was completed initially then, you know, and there was some additional monitoring and and pipe replacement that took place, that needed to take place, that, that was after that date.
All right.
So I mean, I think it's fair to say that you know, the town has met, from our perspective, the town has met all the state's outstanding requirements. They asked us to do some updating in 2020. And that we are still waiting for their final approval. We understand that that approval process is underway.
So then can we just change the language to the town has met all the state's outstanding requirements for resolving the consent decree. State review of our status remains pending. The state has asked for some updates on some of the status reported in 2020. The town is waiting for the review to complete.
I would not say that we've met it because we haven't met it until the state says you've met it. I would say we've, we've addressed and submitted to the state. We've addressed the, the state's requirements under the consent decree and submitted to the state for review. Is that acceptable, Eli?
Yep.
Okay, I, I think we can certainly bring that language together. Any, any other comments on the fact, the water fact?
Yeah, I, I have one, one, one question, Jeff. I would like to see some sort of a number associated with potable drinking water consumption, whether it's an average over several years or whatever. We have that perspective with our sewage, but we do not have that with regard to water. And I realize that maybe that number goes up and down quite a bit. But if it does, I think there should be some acknowledgement of that. But if it does, I think there should be some acknowledgement of that. We just have a capacity which is a 720,000 gallons per day.
Okay.
Do you want that broken out with any detail because depending on how you look at that?
Irrigation and and.
Yeah, that's helpful and also, of course, that assumes we've been, we've been. Making, making gains against what we've been losing and whatever that number is, of course, you have to put that in perspective of what we've been. Losing or leaking out of the pipes in a given year, but yeah, irrigation, that that's a correct, that's a good. Detail, Eli.
Okay, so. John's comment is to have something about. Current consumption. Of potable water. If possible, broken out, that gets complicated, John, because irrigation changes over the course of the year.
Yes, that's correct.
And Eli's comment is is about flushing out a little bit better the. Language of what the town has accomplished and where we are in the process, rather than just we are hopeful. That the consent decree will be lifted in in the near future. My suggestion would be that we pull this out of the consent agenda. Do those updates and then resubmit it to the board for a final review and acknowledgement or acceptance in. November 1st. Is that acceptable?
Jeff, if I may?
Yes, Becky. I don't want to get too far into this, this is supposed to be a quick filler so that Alan wouldn't have to. Wait too long.
Okay, quick filler, I'm just wondering, I don't know if Chuck's still on or not, but the question is that when we're looking at. Assumed use of 110 gallons per day per bedroom. I'm just curious when the last time that was. That number was looked at because that's been used for a long, long time. And does that even take into account the new? Low flow valves and whatever?
So that's a state requirement.
Right.
The state, so that comes from Title V, they require you to. To use that 110 gallon per day per bedroom. But typical usage is is significantly lower than that and it's probably 60 to 75 gallons per day.
Right.
But we are required to use the 110 under Title V.
Do they just not, well, anyway, we I can ask about that later, right, thank you very much.
Okay, so is it acceptable to move this out of the consent?
Yep.
I'm by me.
And take it up, take it up with final corrections. In on November 1st. Okay, I would also like to request, since we've got. The October 4th minutes, or I got the October 4th minutes. Late mid, mid, mid afternoon today and haven't had time to review them in detail. That we pull those out and take those up on November 1st.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Great.
Fine, so. With that, can I get a motion to? To.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
This includes the ratification of the appointment of our principal session, I I'm real excited about that position. And. And the person who's coming on board to take it. They're coming on board next Monday, so. We need to keep them in the consent.
Coming back to town.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
New chair votes yes. All right. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair.
How are you tonight?
I am well, thank you.
Great. This much discussed and battered town warrant. Do you have any comments you want to make on this?
I don't.
Keep it simple, right?
I I think you said it all.
Okay.
Well, there is one question that I would pose before the board. And that is in Article 2. Where we talk about the funding for. The. Designing cost estimating for. A field at the old burn dump. If you wanted to add the option. Of using community preservation funds. If you were to do that. You would have to have the Community Preservation Committee. Meet and and vote to. Either endorse or not, if they don't endorse it, then it does not become an option. But I didn't. That is a possibility if you wanted to put it into the into the article itself. As an option of funding source, it would just, you would add it to the list of funding options, so appropriate or transfer available funds. Including the possibility of community preservation funds. The sum of, et cetera. So when we first talked about this, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask, I'm sorry, Greg, is is this something that we? We can suggest go to CPA or should we first? Run it by CPA? Or CPC?
So it's it's a, it's a timing issue at this point. So we really need to get this. Warrant. Wrapped up and CPC next scheduled meeting is until November 3rd, I believe.
Okay. I don't see why we can't. Vote on the warrant as written tonight. And approach. CPC. Have them do a hearing on it. If they're willing to fund it, we can just change the funding source of Tom main floor.
Well, it becomes a, becomes a scope question for Alan then.
I I think you, I think the better practice would be to put it in the warrant article. You can always, if if the CPC doesn't recommend it, you can always go to another source. Better to have it in there than not.
My concern was that if the CPC did not recommend it, that we would lose the article.
Why?
Because the source was identified as.
It's just a possible source.
You'd 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 identify several possible sources. As we often do in warrant articles.
Okay, then.
So the the motion that was made at town meeting would would specify which of those various sources. We were, we were proposing.
But the warrant will specify both.
Right, one actually would suggest. Multiple, talks about new appropriation, it talks about other available funds. And and possibly it would talk about community preservation funds.
And having thought about it a little bit more, I think if it doesn't identify. CPA funds as a possible source. A motion that that. Use CPC funds, it would probably not be within the scope.
Okay. Do we need to to change and specify that language right now?
So we would, yes, so we would, as I say, add a clause. So that Article 2 would read to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate. Transfer from available funds, including. The possibility of utilizing community preservation funds. The sum of 100,000 or some other fund, et cetera.
I I think you, I think you can vote. To include. The funding sources and let Greg. Edit the language. You agree, Greg?
Yes, but the the board. Rightfully so, the board likes to see a final, final version before they give final approval.
What is the deadline we're working against?
Has to be done tonight.
So if you if you don't do it tonight, you would need to hold a special meeting. Next week to dig a final approval.
Well. Two weeks, right?
Correct.
Alan?
Yes.
Approval of the warrant is two weeks or 30 days?
28 days.
28 days.
No, 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 it's 14 days for the warrant. For the special. Any, any petition articles I do within. Within 20.
I'm sorry, that's right, you're right, Greg, sorry.
Okay, so 14 days. Would be. Halloween, October 31st.
Which awkwardly isn't Sunday.
We'd have to have a meeting prior to the 29th to answer your question, yeah.
Can we ask the question of the board whether or not we would be willing to. Simply direct Greg to update the language to include. CBC funding in the available funds and see whether or not we would be willing to approve. Based on that constraint tonight without seeing the actual final language of that constraint.
That's specific, I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with.
Do we need to do that as a separate motion, separate from the warrant?
No, you can include that as part of your approval of the warrant.
So the language would read something like to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds. Or.
No, including.
Including, including the possibility of the community preservation fund.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to.
I.
Possibility.
I don't think so.
Right, you can you can just say from available funds, including community preservation funds.
Okay. Is that okay, Ann?
Yep.
Okay.
But you'll have an opportunity to chat with them before that, Greg.
Well, it. It it'll be in the, in the, in the warrant, in the article, but depending on what they decide.
So we just need to make sure they get it on their agenda.
I just mean in terms of a heads up. So we don't blindside them.
Right, no, absolutely, and it was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting. And Jack Burke as chair participated in that discussion.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, are there any other questions about any of the other articles? Then I'd like a motion to. Approve the special town meeting warrant for Saturday, November 13th, 2021. As amended. Article 2 as amended. The warrant as a whole and Article 2 as amended.
I move that we vote to accept to it. Accept the warrant, including. Adding the possibility of CPA funds to Article 2.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Ms. Harrison, seconded by Ms. Jakes. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Hey, Alan, you're gonna go to work on the 13th. Oh, you've been working hard on this already, so.
I I was gonna say that will, that will be nothing new.
All right, thank you very much for all the hard work that went into. Getting to that particular warrant.
I'm not the only one, so thank you to you too. To to you all.
Okay.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Oh.
Yep.
7:36 and we're supposed to start the dispatch discussion at 7:35. I'm.
Very impressed. I'm gonna pass on the dispatch discussion.
Oh, Alan, come on.
Crosby, how do you feel about that? Okay, Alan, thank you very much.
I'm gonna go back to reading town meeting time.
Oh, I thought you were gonna watch the red light screen.
I I actually am gonna watch the rest. Good evening.
Just calling you out on that, Al. Okay.
Good night, Alan.
We want, we want to keep this meeting moving along so that you all get to watch some of that. I would like to start. This, this conversation, this discussion has. Two different components and one is. To discuss the level of service that we feel that we need. Before we go to that. We had a request from. The Manchester. By the Sea Firefighters Union. To address the board. With their comments and concerns about dispatch and. To do that is Lieutenant Crosby. Representing the firefighters. I'd like to have him speak first because I think that. It's germane, his comments may be germane to. Our discussion about what follows. So. Go ahead, Tim.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, my name is Lieutenant Tim Crosby. I'm the Lieutenant EMS Coordinator for the Manchester Fire Department. For which I have been a full-time member for over 17 years. I'm also a member of the Manchester Fire Department's Union Local 2912. I'm off duty and not scheduled on shift and zooming in from my personal computer at home. I'll be the representative speaking on behalf of the Union and the Manchester Fire Department. Thank you to the Town of Manchester, Select Board, Town Administrator and the Chiefs of the Police and Fire Departments for doing due diligence and trying to decide what is best regarding dispatch. For public safety in the Town of Manchester. Thank you to the dispatchers for the Town of Manchester for their continued hard work during this very difficult and long process. They are the first link in the chain of public safety. As a stressful and demanding job that requires strong support and recognition. Thank you to each member of the Manchester Dispatch Center. The members of Manchester Fire Department Union Local 2912 like to clarify our position and voice our concerns regarding dispatch in the Town of Manchester. Understanding this has been a very long and difficult discussion, we'd like to clarify that we support all the facts that have been presented over the last 10 plus years. We support a dispatch center that meets all local, state and national standards, which can include NFPA, APCO, OSHA and CLIA. We support having two dispatchers 24 hours, seven days a week for all calls for service. Not letting a single dispatcher be put in a position for failure. We support having the dispatch center be its own department with a department head or supervisor overseen by both the police and fire departments equally. We support having current hardware and software technology referred to as CAD that increases efficiency to all members of the public safety. And we support a system that will increase operational support and staffing to both public safety departments. We support a fiscally responsible budget that will benefit the Town of Manchester and its public safety departments. Our concerns are that if the town and or select board decide to keep the operation of dispatch in the Town of Manchester. That it will not fully fund having two dispatchers 24/7. It will not address the hardware and software upgrades that are required. It will not fund necessary staffing for public safety. Understanding that the police and fire departments are dispatched differently, the current system has insufficient oversight from the fire department to address continued dispatch mistakes and safety concerns. Issues in the past have been downplayed and continue to happen. We asked the Town of Manchester and or the select board to approve a letter of intent for the feasibility study to be done for compatibility with the North Shore Regional 911 Dispatch Center. We asked that if the decision is to keep dispatch in town, that the wording of acceptance be to have two dispatchers 24/7. Maintain all current local, state and national training and standards for dispatch centers. Establish an independent dispatch department and upgrade and maintain all hardware and software to current available dispatch technology. We asked the Town of Manchester and or the select board to. We ask the town of Manchester and or the select board to make a decision. Allow for budget development to be included in this coming budget session. We thank you for allowing the members of the Manchester Fire Department Union Local twenty-nine twelve to speak this evening. We're always available to answer any questions that the public or board members may have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Do members of the board have any comments or questions for Tim, for, excuse me, for Lieutenant Crosby? Let me, let me address you by your professional name.
I have a request, if I may. If Lieutenant Crosby could forward to us the, what he read, there are a lot of points in there that I'd like to. Get some more information on and go over again.
I certainly can afford that to. The board members and to the town administrator.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And to, I assume that your chief has seen it, but also Chief Fitzgerald, make sure that he's seen it.
Yes, we'll forward it to the police department also.
Thank you.
If I may?
Go ahead, Anne.
Go ahead.
No.
Okay.
Go ahead, everybody. Anne, go ahead.
I'm sorry, in the confusion, I've lost my thought.
Okay, I'm sorry. Eli, go ahead.
So this is a question about the two dispatchers twenty-four-seven. I've heard in discussions that I've had different. Metrics for. Under what timeframe we need two dispatchers? Is there any slack? I guess I can, I'll address this to Fire Chief or whoever from the. Fire Department. Wants to answer through you, Jeff. Is there any slack in? How soon you need two dispatchers on for a major incident? Is it? Two minutes, is it five minutes, is it? Ten minutes? What's, what's the room that you think as professionals we have to operate in to bring online a second dispatcher?
I'm happy to handle that one. I think immediately. Because when a situation is a serious situation, everything hits at once. Police need to be dispatched, fire needs to be dispatched. If it's a large enough event, the nine-one-one phone continually rings. So from the, from the onset of the call. It's the same way you can't predict if you don't have two dispatchers, when you'll need that second dispatcher. Just having one to call in to supplement. It doesn't suffice. One of, one of the reasons it doesn't is because emergency medical dispatch. And then Tim mentioned that dispatches and the dispatchers are the front line, the first point of contact. That to properly do emergency medical dispatch, you must have two dispatchers on duty. Because to do it properly, that dispatch, that dispatcher has to stay on the phone with the caller. And relate all the medical procedures to them. While they're doing that, they can't be answering nine-one-one phones, they can't be answering the police radio, and they can't be answering the fire radio. And that's just one example. Of why it needs to be immediate.
Can I answer your question, Eli?
Yes, that answers my question, thank you.
I have a question, Jeff.
Can you hold just one second, because Anne's got her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. As, and this is through you, Jeff, to Chief Clary. As you know, if a nine-one-one call comes in and isn't answered after a certain number of rings. It rolls over to Rockport, what impact does that have on you? And is that sufficient to? Respond to the need for a medical emergency?
Well, not knowing what that nine-one-one call is, I can't really comment on that. If it's one of several for a single event, then it needs to be vetted. But you could have six calls for that single event, say a car accident. While somebody is having a heart attack somewhere else, and that's the seventh nine-one-one call.
I, I'm not sure I was clear. The, the situation is that the. Single dispatcher is responding to a medical emergency and cannot pick up the phone or other calls. And in that case, I believe. Rockport will answer eventually.
She, Rockport may answer the call, but our dispatch has the radios to contact us. I don't know how Rockport is then empowered to take that nine-one-one call. And then transmit that information to us over our frequency. Because that's what the second dispatch in our dispatch center would be doing. So the dispatcher would take the call, realize it's a heart attack, they would get us started. And then they would have to stay on the phone. Meanwhile, we may be calling them on the radio to ask for more information, police may be calling them for more information. And there could be other nine-one-one calls or regular phone calls or emergencies going on. So that's, that's where, that's where it starts to break down. Because do they stop giving the CPR directions to answer us on the radio? Or to take that other nine-one-one call or to answer police on the radio? And that's the function of the second dispatcher in that scenario. And they would still have to juggle back and forth between fire and police radios.
Chief, can I just, I'll make one quick comment? So just so there's a little bit of clarification, in a dispatch center, whether it's a single dispatcher or multi-dis dispatcher, there's actually two functions. There's a call taker and a dispatcher, so the call taker is the one that answers the phone. And the dispatcher is the one that sends that out to the appropriate fire, police, ambulance, whatever's in the town that needs it. In our town right now, the call taker and dispatcher is one single person. So referring to the nine-one-one calls is that call taker in our dispatch takes that call and then transmits it out. If they cannot answer the phone because of whatever reason, multiple calls coming in or something else. And it rolls over, is what we usually call it, to Rockport. And just a quick clarification with that, the state makes that decision of who your backup is, the state nine-one-one system. So many years ago, when nine-one-one became available. The state made the decision that Rockport would be our primary, what is called a P S A. Backup to our phone calls. And as the chief said, the dispatcher, Rockport does not dispatch us directly. They would then have to re-contact back to our dispatch center. And say, you know, we have a call for whatever it is, and then our dispatchers would have to dispatch it. So that's one issue that is a potential failure right there, is that if that dispatcher or the call taker in Manchester is still tied up on a call. They might not be able to take that call back from Rockport. So again, having multiple dispatchers in one center is much better for coordination.
Thank you both very much. Yes.
Thank you. John?
Yes, I was, I was wondering, Chief Clary, if, if I may. About how many times a year and over the past three-year period? Have we had to call for a second dispatcher where there have been? You know, our dispatcher is busy and you've really got somebody else that you've got to come in, you know?
I do not, that would be something that I would defer to Chief Fitzgerald.
Okay.
Because we, we don't track that and we don't know who's in the station. That might be sitting down to cover a second dispatch or if they've called anybody in. So that doesn't, doesn't affect us, we're not in that loop.
Right, well, that would be a helpful data point.
Yeah, I can think of.
Are you on here?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm here, I can think of maybe a handful of times over the last year that we've had to call in a second dispatcher. However, I can only think of one time in the last year or so that we had to roll over to Rockport, and that was an accident on one-twenty-eight. Where all our emergency services, no matter how many dispatchers we would have had, were, was probably overwhelmed just with that one call.
Okay.
And again, what we're, what we're trying to emphasize is we don't want to put any dispatcher, you know, whether it's ours or somewhere else, into a position that. That becomes a difficulty for them. And that's why we're advocating at least for two, and I know it, and for Manchester, it is a small or limited amount of times that that's gonna happen. But every time that that small amount happens could be detrimental to, you know, the victim for starters, if something's not getting transmitted appropriately. And then obviously for public safety's, safety itself. So having two years on anything is obviously better than one.
Any other questions of the board?
Yeah, since we're on that topic of the, how many times this can dispatcher has come in, one of the, I had asked. I sent some email to Greg for asking some metrics, that was one of the questions that I asked. I also asked if we'd been tracking how long it takes us to get the second dispatcher in, in those cases. And if those numbers are not available now, I would like to have them at some point.
Chief Fitzgerald, do you have those numbers?
Yeah, I don't have those in front of me, but I can get those to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Chief, you also had, put your hand up for a minute and then took it down, do you want to say something else?
Uh, no, sorry, I was just trying to fix my camera, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Coin, I see your hand, but I'm gonna. Continue to ask the board about questions that they have before I open this to the public.
Yes, thank you Chairman for taking my call.
No, I'm not taking your call, I'm, I'm telling you that you're gonna have to wait until all the board members have had their chance.
Okay.
Their, their questions clarified.
Oh, I understand, thank you.
Okay, and then I will take your call.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just, I was just trying to clarify that way, you can keep your hand up if you want. Anybody else on the board have a question or a comment? To Lieutenant Crosby or either Chief Fitzgerald or Chief Clary? Any other points of clarification on the need for two dispatchers and how that would work? Okay. So Mr. Coin, that, that. Allows us to shift to public comment, I'm gonna ask that public comments are, you make one, you make, you have one time up at bat. I don't want to have this dispatch discussion take up the rest of our time tonight. But we do have time allocated. At this point, we still are running about ten minutes ahead of schedule, so. We've, we've got time to continue to talk about this, so go ahead, Mr. Coin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Robert Coin, one fifteen Beet Street. I had the opportunity to, to sit in on a. Replay of the Ipswich Board of Selectmen that had a very similar proposal present to them. About a month ago. They have a great website, Ipswich Local News, that had the whole selectmen's meeting broadcast and. They voted five to nothing to maintain local control.
Do you have a question, Mr. Coin, about Manchester? Because I know what's happened in Ipswich. And I don't think that we necessarily need to make a comparison.
Okay, I, I guess I'm just concerned about the need, and I, I think John raised a good point here. What's the history that this would require? Going through this loss of control and, and who knows? How, what the financing will be of this venture going forward. So, my understanding is the previous command center was part of the sheriff's department, and that, that didn't work out for whatever reason, so. I'm just, would like to see that. Those questions are answered, they need it, and I would think they would have those things at hand.
Actually, moving off of our agenda for tonight, our agenda for tonight regarding dispatch was to discuss. The need for having two full-time dispatchers in Manchester. Or actually what the need for dispatch is, whether it's in Manchester or at the regional center. So. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Harrison?
I think, I thought our agenda was to discuss the requirements, not. Specifically.
You're right.
And, and there are, there are other requirements that I would like to discuss when it's, the time is appropriate. If someone else would like to address questions to. Either the chiefs or Lieutenant Crosby. I will, I will defer, otherwise, could we go into larger questions?
Hi. The, the agenda says service levels, Anne. And, you know, I, I certainly.
And I think, I think my points are.
Go ahead.
Part of, part of service levels.
Okay, as long as, as long as we're following a published agenda, because I don't.
Okay, my, my question, my questions are service levels. In times when things aren't going well. I've talked to Greg and there is a generator for backup in case of electrical failure. My understanding is that, and is that we need. To upgrade our software and that the new software will require an internet connection. And we have, the town hall had an internet failure this week. If we have a CAD system that depends on internet and the internet goes down, we lose our service. So I would like to see included in our evaluation, how we can guarantee internet service. With Comcast, above and beyond Comcast. My third question is the security of the dispatch center. The, it's very secure from the front, but a guy with a ladder and a rock and a tear gas grenade could go in through the side window. He probably wouldn't go in if there was tear gas there, but he would certainly disrupt. So I would like to see included in our costs, the cost of actually securing that rather than firing the front door and leaving the back door open. And those are my other service issues.
Okay, I'd like Chief Fitzgerald to comment on. The security issue that Anne just brought up about that side window.
Yeah, so when we remodeled the station in two thousand sixteen, it, the. Per accreditation requirements where we have to be in a secure room where the dispatcher has access to a bathroom and, and lock the door. We made security improvements on, on the walls with bullet resistant. Sheet rock, we made the, the dispatch door able to lock. However, the, the window does need attention and that was just lack of funding at that point.
I'd hate to see lack of funding cause us to lose our dispatch.
I agree.
Okay, any other service-related comments or questions? All right. All right. So we've looked at identified a new item tonight that needs to be addressed in terms of capital upgrades, I guess you would call it, or capital expense on securing the dispatch window and the police station, if that would be and that should be part of the expenses that are specified.
And some way of maintaining internet connectivity when Comcast lets us down.
That's a bigger one.
Jeff, I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Maybe this is for Greg. For our internet connection, don't we have a closed loop throughout town through Comcast?
We do. So we have the fiber loop that serves the buildings. But we are dependent on one, one connection into that fiber loop. So we could pay for a second a second connection at a different, a different node.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? So the question is, where do we go from here? What's, what's the next step? If we we clearly need to get costs for securing the window and the dispatch center at the police station. Having a backup system, fiber system. If the initial node goes down or the single node that we have now goes down.
And we need the information that Eli has asked for.
And that's information regarding the time to the station for backup dispatchers, correct Eli?
Yeah, I will resend my email that I sent out last time on this.
Okay, did that email go to Chief Fitzgerald?
It didn't last time. I will this time increase my list.
And to Chief Cleary, please. So the the other major piece of information is clarification of the capability of Manchester to go to regional dispatch, if that would be the decision that was made. That requires feasibility study and we've talked about this before. When the people from North Shore 911 came, they specified about the feasibility study. Feasibility study is not a commitment to join regional dispatch. It's a study to determine what are the needs and costs associated with those needs for the town to join regional dispatch. My question to the board is, is that our next short-term step? Particularly my understanding is that the feasibility study takes between 60 and 90 days. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes, possibly a little quicker, but to be on the safe side, yes.
Okay. So and that's after contact and agreeing to do a feasibility study. If we are to if we are to have all the data that we need. My own thought about this is that we do need to go through the feasibility study. And I raise that question to the board in terms of clarifying the service needs of the town and the availability of those needs through regional center as well as through beefing up our own dispatch.
Jeff?
Yes, John.
Yeah. I would be in favor of taking that step. I think we need to find out a bit more about exactly how things might interface with them. And equally important, every time we have a discussion, there are always a couple of more pieces of information that kind of feed into our analysis that we have to look at. And you don't know what you don't know. And I think that that analysis would give us a little more clarity in terms of our assessment of our own dispatch service to make sure we've got all of the details that we we need to have for a comparison.
Okay, any other board members' comments?
Jeff, if I may?
Becky?
I, I agree completely. I think that if what we want to do is assess what the best situation for the town is, we can't do that without looking at both pictures. And it's simply a feasibility study. It's no commitment. And I, I think that it would behoove us to do feasibility study to know what we're looking at and what we're trying to compare. Thank you.
Okay. Eli?
So I'm in favor of the getting the feasibility study because, well, I think it's going to give us more data. I also do think that we need to firm up our definition of what we as a board think we need to support for maintaining dispatch in-house so that we can be deciding between two alternatives versus one regional alternative and an unknown internal future.
I think part of that firming up is the discussion we've embarked on tonight about what level of service in terms of dispatch personnel that we need. And that's independent of whether it's provided here in Manchester or whether it's provided through the regional center. And we still haven't finalized that question tonight in terms of the level of dispatch personnel. We've heard some other service needs that, as John said, and new things crop up and we, when we scratch the surface, not scratch the surface, but scratch further into this. So do think we need to come to some conclusion about what dispatch we have tonight. Go ahead, Anne.
Yeah. Talking with, with Chief Cleary and Lieutenant Crosby before the, when the fire dispatch was separate, we effectively had two dispatchers in town. Not an ideal situation because they were separated and couldn't communicate well. And the situation, but in fact, there were two dispatchers, one in the fire station and, and one in the police station. When we combined the two, for very good reasons, that because the fire department, when they had an all-out call, could not bring in call firefighters to handle the dispatch at the fire station. But at that, at that stage, we effectively lost a dispatcher. So we are.
I would, go ahead, Anne, I'm sorry.
No. I'm done.
Okay. In response to what you're saying, having a single dispatcher at the fire station and a single dispatcher at the police station who aren't connected doesn't address the needs that were brought up tonight by Lieutenant Crosby in terms of and Chief Cleary about what the service level needs are. They would have to be connected. So it's, I, I agree with you that we had historically two dispatchers, but it's not the service level that we're talking about now. We're talking about a service level that addresses the that addresses the needs of public safety in the town. Okay, Sarah Melch had her hand up first. Sarah, I'm going to ask you to defer for just a moment to Chief Fitzgerald.
Thanks, Jeff. Just a point of clarification and maybe Tim, you can correct me, but your dispatcher when be before it was separate was, we would take the 911 call over here, call you at the fire station, you, your on-duty crew would dispatch and then your call personnel would come in and take over the desk. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that was correct. So there, at that time, there was a delay between the time of the dispatch from the fire station until the call personnel would come in. The call personnel at the time, though, were local, mostly local personnel that were fairly close to the station. So there was not an overly large delay. And then, as it's been stated, over time, we were starting to lose call personnel. People were not coming back on the call, so there was a longer delay for that dispatcher to come into that station. And when actually this whole thing started many, many years ago for the regional dispatch, that's when also, you know, we were struggling to staff on the call side with a dispatcher. And it was, the decision was made to combine the dispatch at the police station, make it a civilian dispatch center. But it was also sort of in conjunction with the regional dispatch discussion at the same time. And things, you know, didn't progress. As you can see, 10 plus years later, we're still discussing this when we really had the initial discussion many years ago with the regional dispatch to potentially go there.
Thank you. Sarah Melch.
Yes, as a member of the finance committee, I would suggest that the finance committee would feel more comfortable if a feasibility study was conducted to give us more data. We like numbers. And the more information we can have regarding the two options, I think would be beneficial. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other?
Jeff, will you take another call from the public? Lorraine Iavani, I just have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Lorraine.
Okay, thank you so much. This is a question for both chiefs on staffing. Are you both in agreement tonight that two dispatchers would be something that the town could incorporate in some kind of organizational fashion? I know we were talking earlier about a separate organization, but do both chiefs agree with two dispatchers? That's all I want to know. Thank you.
I can say that that's what I've been advocating for from the beginning and I haven't moved from that position that I believe we need to.
Yeah, Lorraine, for me, if the town or the board or the, you know, the, the people that make the decisions came to me and said that they would support and fully fund two dispatches on it at all times, I would absolutely, you know, be in agreement with that. However, there are times where the call volume just does not dictate that.
Thank you, Chief Fitzgerald and Chief Cleary.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yes.
We're going to, we've talked about service levels. And when we put together the, when we, if we do a feasibility study, which it seems like we're going in that direction, we'll want to be doing the equivalent because that's going to develop some relatively strong, more detailed numbers for us. And we want to be doing the equivalent for ultimately the the in-house version, the we agree on as the appropriate service levels. We have rough numbers for those from, that we've been talking about for some time. And we will want to presumably strengthen those numbers somewhat. Do we anticipate asking the finance committee to do that? Or third party or some combination?
That, that's an interesting question. I, I would defer to Greg. My, my, my idea about that or my thought about that before I toss it over into your lap, Greg, is that we need to design the service level, we need to specify the service levels that we want that we need. And then from there, costing it out. And I think that you know, the points are well, are very clearly spoken that there is a need when there's a need. And the need is thankfully infrequent. But the consequences of not fulfilling that need when it rises are fairly traumatic. So I think the first thing as a board that we need to do before we put this into the finance committee's lap or the town administrator's lap or the chief's lap is to say what do we need and how do we, how do we specify that need? There is a proposal that was made tonight, which was the first time that I've heard it, even though it may have come up in the long history of, of the town discussing this whole issue, and that is to have dispatch be its own entity. Its own department. That's a different kind of need. That's, that's a different way of designing it that, that has some costs involved. So I think we I agree with you, Eli, that we need certainly finance committee input on this. But I think that we need to give to them, this is what we're, this is what we're designing and then working with finance committee and with Greg, come up with, and the chiefs, come up with what's that going to cost? Greg?
So I would agree, Jeff, and I think the two chiefs and I can, can put together the numbers pretty clearly and coherently. Once, once you tell us what we're, what service we're providing. So I don't, I don't find it a difficult task of pulling the numbers together. The difficult task is deciding specifically what level of service, you know, some, for example, a different variation is, is like in Hamilton. So they I believe in their dispatch operations, they, they do what they call an impact shift. So they will have the two on during the busiest times of the day. And during the traditionally less busy times, they only have the one. So that doesn't mean that you can't have a large incident during that, you know, at 3:00 AM in the morning. That's certainly possible, but you know, the odds are that that's not when a large incident occurs. So it's, it's all sort of a cost benefit analysis of where you, are you prepared 24/7 for that large incident or do you do you take some other variation?
Yeah.
I would like to hear from the chiefs about when large incidents actually occur and whether we can plan on having them on weekdays between eight and four.
I think the issue would be to put that into data. When have large incidents occurred?
Yes.
Or the demand for multiple dispatches occurred? Not the frequency, we know the frequency is low. But it's a high risk, low frequency situation. Very high risk, low frequency.
The question is Greg's suggestion of having a schedule of we'll have two on during some hours and not during others. And for that, I would like the data from the chiefs.
Yeah, for me.
Go ahead, Becky.
If we're, if we're looking at these two options, would it make sense to, yes, look at dispatch as a completely separate entity within town? So we're looking at dispatch as it is, where it is, with possible modifications. The rec center and a third option of having our own dispatch in town, but not run in one department. Give them room five on the top floor. Just kidding. But I am serious about this other possibility, not about room five.
Sure. Okay. Chief Cleary.
I don't want to belabor the point. It's, it's directed at Ms. Harrison's comments. You really can't plan. You can look at statistics and that tells you what, what happened or was likely to have happened. That's not always a good predictor of the future. It, I look at it similar to insurance. Do you want to be fully insured in case something happens? Or do you want to leave off some of the insurance and roll the dice that your windshield doesn't break? Or you don't get into a fender bender? You, you can't predict those either. The, the only mitigating factor of driving factor is that the rec will give us at least two dispatchers, a dedicated fire and a police, a dedicated police dispatcher. And, and that's kind of what's partially driving the model because we can get that for zero. So if we're talking a cost benefit analysis, that figures into somewhat of my perspective. The other thing with full timers and impact shifts, current, the current model, the full-time dispatchers who are the most experienced and put in the most hours are here Monday through Friday. Nights, weekends and holidays, especially over the summer, when we have tourists, when we have traffic, that's when the part-time dispatchers who maybe only work once a month, who do not have the skill and the experience of the full-time dispatchers are actually filling those shifts. So you have the least experienced people currently filling what some might deem the more high priority shifts. And, and that's part of what I see as an issue in the current system and the current makeup of the staffing. So if we're talking service level, I, I just want to put that out there as well. It's not that they're bad dispatchers. But if you do it 40 hours a week, you're inherently going to be better than if you do it eight hours a month.
Okay. So is the board clear on the requirements that we're asking for service levels? For dispatch? Yeah.
So if you include in service, service levels, the notion that there's an independent department, that's not something that we've discussed in this round in the past. I'm not sure if that's defined as a service level. If, if that we're, we're just talking about two dispatchers full time, if that's the limit of it, then I guess I'm going to have to say no. I don't, I don't think that we've put forth a yeah, no, I'm going to have to put together my thoughts a little bit more. I'm not quite clear on it, no.
You're not quite clear on what the service level is that you think we need?
The detailed service level that we're going to go and ask people to build a number around is that, because that's how I interpreted your question.
I think that there can be options that, that are presented and whether we find those options acceptable or not. I mean, I I guess my, my basic question is is it the, the sense of the board that we need to have two full-time dispatchers?
There's still a dispatch mode.
Jeff?
Yes, John?
I don't, I don't think we have that sense yet. If anything, there's been another, there's been another scenario that's been put in here, maybe more than one. As as Greg had indicated with regard to Hamilton, and they've got two dispatchers, but only two dispatchers for, I don't know if it's eight hours or 12 hours, but it's certainly not 24. And that seems to be a scenario that I think about and say, well, that's something we haven't looked at yet. You can kind of draw a straight line because we've got kind of a scenario for one and for two, and you know, that's going to be somewhere in the middle. Or at least that's my assumption. But that's nevertheless, that's a, that's a scenario. And then the scenario overlaying all of that as an independent department of whether, what kinds of costs or efforts are involved in setting something up like that. So I see several other scenarios there, and I'm not sure what would grow out of the feasibility study if there might be something that comes up there that says, oh, well, we didn't think about that. Let's think about that and how that, that particular service might affect the way we're operating right now. So we're certainly not set, set on one scenario here. I just don't think we are. And I don't know if we're going to come to a conclusion tonight. Personally, I don't think we are.
I'm not asking that we settle on a scenario.
Yeah.
I'm asking, are we settled on the need for two dispatchers to service this town?
So I am, from my perspective, based on the discussions I've had, I'm leaning that way. I still want the metrics that I was asking about earlier. Before, I'm willing to say, yeah, that's what I think we need. I'd like to be able to have that data put forth before the board so that it can be actual data. That didn't make any sense.
Well, I think it'd make a lot more sense if we shared at this meeting, and I don't want to go much further with this tonight because we're, we're starting to slip on our schedule and we have two other major topics to cover. But just to share with the public what those five metrics are that you're asking about. The first one is, what are the triggers in our current in-house dispatch for bringing in the second dispatcher? What has happened to cause someone to bring in, bring the second dispatcher in? And I don't want these questions answered tonight, but we do need answers. How many times in the past three years have we brought in a second dispatcher under those criteria? Or because it was deemed necessary? How long in each case did it take for the dispatcher to arrive? Was it ever more than 15 minutes? If so, if so, how much longer? And why? And finally, the fourth question is, what is the average turnaround time for public safety personnel rolling from the time for, for public safety personnel rolling from the time the call comes in in our current in-house dispatch? The fifth point is same as number four for the regional center. So that's a question that we would certainly want to have addressed in any feasibility study that we did.
And Jeff, you might add to that. When, when was, when during the 24 hour time period did those, those calls for that second dispatcher go out? What time of day?
At what day?
Yes, and what date?
Okay.
Chairman, may I?
Just a minute, Lieutenant Crosby. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
So just two comments. One is on the forming a separate department within the town for a dispatch department. Clarification on that can be, right now it is budgeted under the police department. It would become its own entity department that would be managed by the police and fire department. So it doesn't necessarily have to have a department head. It could have a supervisor that is managed by the police and fire department. So it wouldn't be a full, potentially not a full department, separate head, which would reduce the cost. So that was one, maybe one clarification with that. So and then another thing I, you know, just listening to the comments on the feasibility study, just make, make the decision, just make the decision tonight to at least do the feasibility study so you can get those numbers. You know, it's, it's not a commitment to the region center. It's, it's no cost to the town. It gives you the information. Just make that motion now to at least get the feasibility study. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from the board?
So are we?
Does anyone want to make a motion to move towards feasibility study?
I'll make that motion, Jeff, or?
I'll second.
So I'll be happy to let John and
Okay. In further discussion of that particular decision? I think we've been down this path long enough to know that that decision was coming tonight. Okay, roll call vote? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
The chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for thanking us, but that decision has been, in my mind, about six months coming with a lot of discussion in public dispatch, excuse me, public dispatch forums. So it's not a decision that was rushed into tonight. In terms of the questions.
Jeff?
I will, I will amend Eli's email and to Chief Cleary and Chief Fitzgerald. If you guys could get together and collect the data that Eli's talking about. And report back to the, to us. You can send an email. You don't have to wait for a meeting. We'd like to have it certainly before our next meeting. And then we can be really specific about the next step, which is designing a strategy to meet the service levels that the board deems necessary. Okay. Becky?
Jeff?
Yes.
I just want to, with, with the vote to request the feasibility study, what is the next step? Who actually does that? And how does that go forward?
That'll be something that Greg and I will work on.
Basically, it's a letter that we send to North Shore Regional 911. And if you authorize the chair to sign that letter, we can get that out.
A move to authorize the chair to set, to sign a letter to the North Shore 911 requesting a feasibility study.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Harrison, seconded by Ms. Jakes. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay. I'm going to bring our conversation to a close on dispatch tonight. At this time. At this time. And I thank Lieutenant Crosby for his input and Chief Fitzgerald and Chief Cleary for their input. And the public who had comments. We're going to we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which was supposed to start thirty-one minutes ago. But I think we're doing better than I expected at this point. And this is a discussion of traffic calming strategies. And I just want to introduce this discussion briefly. Last week, we had this on our agenda. We didn't get to it. And Chuck Damm has put together a with with, I believe, Chief Fitzgerald, has put together a process for policy on traffic calming. I don't know if I want to call it a board policy yet. We'll come to that. How this gets framed and whether this gets put into the mix of all the other board policies becomes an official policy of the board's selection. But I want to to hear this proposal for this policy. But before that, I just wanted to comment that I had a conversation earlier today with Chief Fitzgerald regarding the numerous letters and now a very significant number of citizens signing a petition for some way of addressing traffic violators in the town of Manchester. And so what I'd like to do is to try and put a cap on each part of that discussion. And maybe start with going over the draft policy. And then shift over to talk about this petition and and some of the other concerns that have been raised by citizens regarding traffic safety in the town. So I don't know how you wanted to present this, Chuck, but if you want to go ahead or if you want Greg to go ahead, whatever way.
No, I'm happy to do it. Hello, very Chuck Damm, DPW. So yeah, we put together a policy. I guess I'll just start off by saying, you know, I've been in town for over three and a half years now, going on four. You know, we've through lots of work and lots of different boards and committees. We've had, I think, thoughts about traffic calming and, you know, speeding in general and making roadways more accessible for bikes and pedestrians as well as moving vehicular traffic. And so you know, I think the policy that I tried to put together, you know, took some of that experience into account. While also kind of zone, you know, making it a more step-by-step process rather than you know, people's emotions, because I think that when you get into this traffic calming, it becomes very localized and people only see what's at their front door. They don't necessarily look, you know, how that affects the neighbors down the street or in the next street over and so on. And so this kind of takes a stab at making it a more methodical process rather than an emotional process. And, you know, that's not to say that people don't have a right to their emotions, but if we were to just go based on that, we would end up with speed bumps on every corner and it would be very hard to navigate our our roadways. So with that, I guess I'll just jump right into it. You know, we, like I said, we have gone through kind of a lot of different variations of this. This is just the first try of writing it down all in one place. You know, we've we've done trials, we've done, we've implemented traffic management type things around town. We've we've got the data with the PD and, you know, their different studies that they do and, you know, taking that into account. So I guess the I was able to kind of boil this down to twelve steps. I guess I won't go, you know, read it word for word, but just to kind of get a general sense to everybody that might not have been able to look it up. But the, you know, step one is obviously to report the problem, which, you know, I foresee that coming from the general public to either police or DPW. And, you know, I set a couple of criteria in there for, you know, how to move it in the process. The idea behind that, I did get some questions from Becky and, you know, I tried to say that, you know, the idea is not to, you know, necessarily exclude you know, people or their streets necessarily, but I do think it lends itself to, you know, we're looking at if we're going to implement projects that are going to cost, you know, money and effort of town staff. You know, they need to somewhat, you know, benefit the entire town. So they they should be bigger streets. They should be residential streets because you don't want, you know, people that might not live on the street to, you know, be affected. So what I mean there is you don't want to do downtown businesses who maybe they're not local people that signed a petition, but they are needed. You know, so they get blindsided by, you know, different traffic implementation that we put in. So, you know, this this is really zoning in on, you know, residential areas where there may or may not be a speeding problem. If they can get some people in town or, you know, in their neighborhood to agree that there's a problem, they can bring it to the police or DPW. And we can take it to the next step, which would be to do some more data collection, which the Chief Fitzgerald and I have talked about, which, you know, we, it happens already. It's just now this is a more formal process where the police are with DPW's assistance in some instances, put out their data collection units and they find out, you know, if they're really a problem. Are we really seeing a lot of speeding or is it just kind of isolated incidences? And so then we get to, after that of data collection, we do a little bit of an evaluation and decide that, you know, it meets certain criteria. And now the criteria I put in here, again, we're just to kind of weed out some of the things that might be looking at emotional responses versus, you know, actual needed traffic calming measures. So, you know, that's where you see the zero to seven mile per hour over the speed limit average is really, you know, in most cases, not really enforceable by PD. And also something that's, you know, not probably, if you're comparing it with other traffic calming areas, you know, you need to, you need to start somewhere. So, you know, if one neighborhood has cars that are going ten miles per hour with a speed limit, that should be weighted more than one where they're not. And then again, traffic volumes, if there's a, you know, a street that where we are evaluating and there's, you know, many vehicles per hour, you know, that's a lot different than when there's, you know, just a few vehicles per hour and, you know, whether or not they're speeding. We also put in some considerations for school zones, although, you know, in Manchester, the school zone is kind of already established and pretty well marked. You know, there is an opportunity, I think, there for additional measures, but we can discuss that later if needed. And so then, you know, after we do that data collection and we evaluate, then, you know, give it a scoring. The scoring is really just to, you know, be able to compare it to other places. Or, you know, other places where we've done the same amount of evaluation. And then we would go to step, stage one, traffic calming was what I called it here, which would be, you know, additional traffic calming devices such as pavement marking signage, more traffic enforcement, education, public awareness, you know, the kind of the well-lying fruit, easy to implement type things that, you know, are very low cost. And, you know, then as we put those things in, now that something that we maybe haven't done as much of or really, you know, circled back to the general public would be the follow-up data collection and to basically, you know, compare that to the time where we, you know, before the traffic calming was implemented. So, you know, maybe, maybe the signs are working, maybe they're not. But there's at least a step in there to reevaluate it. And then you know, if if we get to the end of that, and it seems that that is, you know, the additional kind of visibility has done its job, then maybe we just end there. If the, you know, the applicant that, you know, brought the problem to the, our attention in the first place thinks that it warrants more traffic calming, then we get into the physical altercations of the roadway, which would be your bump outs or your curb extensions, your raze crosswalks, your mid-jock, mid-block chokers, all of these different type of physical things that really need to be more well thought out and, you know, engineered in some instances with site distances and, you know, all the different things that go into, you know, laying out a roadway. So those those take a little bit more expertise, maybe in some cases, and they also take you know, budget that may or may not be available on an annual basis unless it's, you know, earmarked ahead of time. And then again, after, so if if the neighborhood can, you know, get people to, you know, sign on to that petition, we put a mark, a mark in here of seventy-five percent. So we're looking for a little bit more than just a majority consensus. And then we would, you know, convene with, you know, we'd probably advertise and do some sort of, you know, whether it's a board selection meeting or some other formal kind of neighborhood meeting where we kind of make sure that everybody's aware of what's going to happen and why it's happening. And, you know, field any kind of last minute comments or anything like that. Then we get the funding and we implement the project. And then again, in some instances, we've had where people want to undo things that we've done. In this case, we would say that no, it has to stay there for a certain set time in the draft here. We have three years. And then to remove such things would take another, you know, seventy-five percent or more than a majority, you know, simple majority to kind of undo something that we've implemented. And it would have the similar traffic studies, you know, pre and post and whatnot. So that's kind of the gist of it. I'm happy to answer any other questions. Just a couple kind of thoughts. I think Becky had some questions about why I picked those numbers. The the answer is that, you know, I'm not married to any of these numbers. It's just you have to start somewhere. And I think that, you know, looking for people to drive the exact posted speed limit, that's not the intent of a speed limit. Speed limits are based on eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentile speeding. And so the, you know, it kind of lends itself to, you know, sometimes people are going faster than the speed limit and that's, you know, not necessarily okay, but also not something that we enforce on a hundred percent basis. It would just be impossible to do that. So we're not looking for a hundred percent. And so that's why, you know, we leave some buffer of bigger. And if if that's not what people want, then, you know, it's something that we can look at for editing. I just think that you know, we have to start somewhere and we have to be realistic about our goals. So that's generally all I had to say about that. I guess from that, I'll leave it to you, Jeff, if you have any follow-up questions right away or any other ideas.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah. First, a comment, I think I said this last time when we initially reviewed the proposal. I think this is a, this is a really good job and I'm really pleased with this proposal. And I think it probably should be policy. I know it's derived from a lot of experience with some of the actual roads in town and the process that we've gone through. And I think it it seems like pretty much just the right kind of escalation mix and and plan to deal with those in the future, make it a lot easier to deal with. I'd sent an email, only one comment before, and that was on signage. We actually, I'd like to see it clarified, what we mean by signage is to include stop signs in the first stage, which change the fundamental flow of traffic. And if so, I think we should make that explicit. And other than that, I didn't really have any, any comments to add at this time.
I did think about that a little bit, Eli, after your email. And I think that it would be okay to include stop signs in the stage one, because for them to become permanent, they would have to be agreed on, you know, after the fact that, you know, that same seventy-five percent level and requested. So I would be willing to put a stop sign out there on a trial basis in stage one. And then only have it become permanent after we've gone through the rest of the steps. So, for instance, on Forestry, we never really had a stage two to think about. But I feel like that's where we were. And it just, at that point, has gone away. And to be honest, I haven't actually heard a lot of criticism of, you know, why are there so many stop signs on Forestry? On the other hand, when we did have the speed bumps on Mill Street, I did hear a lot of the flip side saying, why do you have speed bumps on Mill Street? So, you know, that's not to say it's seventy-five percent or not. I'm just saying, there's a, you know, from what I hear, it seems like that would have been a, you know, a good way to go about it and would have been able to become permanent in that situation. So I'm open to other suggestions if we want to explicitly say stop signs would be only a stage two measure, that's fine, but I think it's okay in stage one.
I think stage one is fine. I think we should just be clear that signage in that stage would include stop signs.
Other board members have questions? Comments? I had a couple, Chuck.
Sure. No, they don't do this at the regional dispatch. Not even.
Under other considerations?
Sure.
You have a school zone or pedestrian generator? Is that like a little box on the side of the road that people come out of? And what is a pedestrian generator?
So that would be like your train station, although that doesn't really lend itself to a residential neighborhood, but that is a pedestrian generator. I suppose you could say the beach is a pedestrian generator. Again, not a huge residential area, but.
Okay. All right. I I would like to have you consider changing school zone. You might keep it, but we also have a lot of safety zones that aren't school zones. We have some safety zones that aren't school zones. For instance, near senior housing. And at other points in the town where traffic mitigation led to changing the basic town speed limit to something lower.
No, that's fair. I should have put that in.
And your traffic speeds are the amount of the eighty-fifth percentile speed is above the posted speed limit. So we'd have to go to eight to ten miles above. If the eighty-fifth percentile would have to be eight to ten miles above, that is that fifteen percent of the vehicular traffic would have to travel faster than eight miles an hour above the speed limit. Is that correct?
You'd have to repeat that slower. I, the eighty-fifth percentile, it it's a function of the not necessarily the average speed so much as the number of units through this, the zone. So like
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. It's looking at the speeds of the vehicles traveling in the zone. The last fifteen percent above.
Yep.
And that speed would have to be minimum of eight, maximum of ten to get five points and over ten to get ten points.
Correct.
Okay. I had the question about putting stop signs, which Eli picked up. My only other question was I understand you took a dart throw at seventy-five percent. I understand you took a dart throw at seventy five percent.
Yeah.
Have you seen any other traffic calming policies such as this one? From other towns and seen what numbers they put in, if they have such numbers?
If we're being honest, I stole these numbers exactly from another town. So, yes. I did follow up with that DPW director and he said that they don't really they, this policy is a policy and it is on the books. However, in his time there, they haven't really used it a ton. So I don't know if that means they've solved all the traffic calming problems of the world, or if they just
Or seventy five percent was too high?
Yeah, they just haven't, well, it seems my takeaway from that conversation was just that they they have the policy on the books, they address the issue, they don't necessarily follow it in-house as much as they probably did when they implemented it. So it'd be like saying, if we if we implement this policy and, you know, new chief, new DPW director step in and say, you know what? We're just gonna put out stop signs, no matter, you know, on the on the first call, we'll put out stop signs and keep the residents happy, something like that. So that my my takeaway was that they're like, we have the policy, we don't use it a ton. Not necessarily that they're quibbling with the seventy five percent in the, you know, step four.
Was the town in question? Was this a BOS policy of that town?
I don't know that, it's it's a accepted town policy. They they have a different traffic, it would be like our bike and pet committee. So it was like a committee policy put forward, accepted by the BOS. And so at that level, I guess, I don't, I don't think they, yeah.
I I'm just, I'm just wondering about the seventy five percent. That seems like a fairly high bar.
Well, that'd be eight out of ten residents. You know, that's, that would be, that would get you above the seventy five percent. So it's sixteen out of twenty.
So it's really eighty percent?
Well, or fifty nine of twenty. It's just, I guess the question would be, and, you know, this is something that I'd have to vet out a little bit more, but do, you know, does one household equal one vote, or does a household of ten equal ten votes? I'm not, I'm not sure. Is it registered voters only, or, you know, do high school level kids get to say? I don't, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead.
Well, the seventy five percent does say influence properties. So I think it's a signature per property. One property, one signature equals one property regardless of the number of folks. And you did, you did say, I, you know, there there was other communities that have, I guess, a similar sort of sort of a policy. And I'm impressed, it's a good, it's a good process to put through. Have have the other ones pushed back on seventy five percent? Because that was my reaction. That was a lot. And of course, influence properties is a subjective term.
Yeah. So, yeah, like anything, you know, everything can't come to a vote. You know, that's why I wrote the policy around, you know, Todd and I agreeing on a number and, you know, making, you know, influence properties. You know, I think we would listen to people, you know, in practice, we would listen to people that, you know, maybe were outside the limits that we first drew. You know, whether they're for or against it, to, you know, kind of give that some some merit. You know, we're not perfect and neither is this policy, but I think, you know, it's it's a fair it's a fair starting point. I think it's a fair thing to, you know, expand the zone a little bit or narrow it a little bit if if you need to to kind of fit the, fit the number of houses that are there. So I guess what I'm getting at is seventy five percent might be a high bar if you just look at, you know, Pleasant Street extension. But if you put it out to Rosedale and Arbella and, you know, the first set of Lincoln Street and, you know, the first set of School Street, seventy five percent now is, you know, seems a little bit more reasonable. So that's, that's how I'm looking at it. Again, that's not to say I'm perfect. I'm just saying, I think that that makes sense. You know, to bring back the Mill Street example, I feel like there was a lot of, and right or wrong, there there was a lot of people that had a lot of hard, you know, feelings about that. And that, you know, that's good. I'm, you know, I I completely understand. But to get seven out of ten just on Mill Street, I mean, there might only be ten houses on Mill Street. So I don't think I would limit my scope to just Mill Street in that situation. And to be perfectly honest, we got a lot of complaints from the I'm gonna get on Hidden Ledge, I think, is up there. Is that Hidden Ledge or? I think it's Hidden Ledge. But anyway, some of the other butters, you know, had strong feelings the other way. So I don't think I would discount their feelings.
Well, well, the signature list was rather long, but it was from all over town. So I don't know if there was in any one particular region that is that people that are really opinionated to have concerns in their neighborhood. But, but you're saying that 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 specification was not something that with whomever you spoke in another town said, oh, we got a lot of noise about this.
No, like you said, they they really hadn't, I feel like they hadn't, they implemented it, you know, this is a nine year old policy in that town. So and the the current DPW director wasn't there when they instituted it. So in his tenure, they really hadn't been using it as much. I don't think that was a function of the seventy five percent. I think it was a function of they are handling it before it gets to the policy, you know, before somebody brings up the policy. But I think, I think, you know, as I was reading it and as I was thinking about how we've handled things in the past, you know, I I don't think it's that far off. And I I did, you know, take several liberties. The numbers specifically came from there, but I I cut out a lot of kind of intermediate steps and handholding.
Okay, so what would you like from us on this?
I don't know that I want anything. I was asked to discuss traffic calming policies and I said I can do that. And I've I have, you know, in the past, when we were dealing with Mill Street and Forestry, we had, you know, between Greg and Chief Fitzgerald and I, we, you know, talked about it and, you know, kind of put it out there. And I just took the opportunity to put something down. So I guess my my thought is, I I don't think it's a good use of board time or my time or the chief's time trying to respond to every single issue of traffic calming and perception without being able to point to a policy and say, well, this is our policy. And, you know, this is how we're gonna handle it, because, you know, it it kind of takes a little bit of the emotion, like I said, out of it as well as you know, maybe my own biases. So now that's out. So I mean, I'm happy to take any edits or give it to you guys to mark up as you wish. And if you want to make it a policy.
Yeah, I suggest that that each of you, you know, take a little more time with this and and make your notations in the margins. And and get any comments either to me or to Chuck and Todd directly. And that you know, either at your next meeting or the meeting after that, you, we come back with some revisions based on those comments.
We may be also just tonight, get a sense of the board, whether or not we think we just want to, we would we would be interested in turning this actually into a formal policy.
Any comments from the board on that?
I would.
I think it would make the job, everybody, Chuck's job and 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 Chief Fitzgerald's job a lot easier if there were a policy, a procedure that they they knew how, what that was established and could be followed.
I think it would be helpful for residents too.
Residents? Really?
You know, as long as as long as it's it's it policy doesn't accidentally preclude somebody from having having recourse if the policy specifically doesn't
So
fit them.
So with any policy, there's always the case that you can petition the board and say, hey, this isn't working. Here's why. And the board always has the option to go, no, well, this is the policy, we're sticking to it. Or they can hear the appeal.
Good.
Jeff, did you see the chats?
Oh, that should be disabled.
So just just quickly, the the policy can be found on the website as part of the agenda package that was posted for tonight's meeting. And then certainly comments from bike and pet, I think would be welcome.
Okay, but I would like to get this put into place later than December.
Jeff?
Yes.
We have a policy on policies that requires two readings and we haven't yet.
I understand. What what I'm saying is putting it into place. And so I I don't want this to be something that becomes a shelf policy that doesn't get used. And I'd like to get it the final draft or get a draft and decide
Two readings and then a
When we're gonna do our first reading. And we could do our first reading, if we could get a final draft together, we'd do our first reading on November first. We do our second reading on November fifteenth and then it's done.
Generally, the acceptance is a third, is it is at a third meeting, but
No, I I understand. I'm just trying to put a timeframe around when comments need to be in. Who's gonna do the comments? What's the next step here? So let me state what I think, which is comments should be in, since you've had a chance to look at this for two weeks. Comments should be in by the end of the week. And so that we can get a new draft with the comments for our meeting on November first.
When's next? I can find this out myself, but the next schedule, like that meeting. Looking. November tenth.
But that's fine. We can we can do our first reading on November fifteenth. I just don't want this to drag on too long.
Yeah.
Because there's this clearly concerns of all the people who signed the petition that was included in our packet about addressing traffic calming. And this process will help to do that. Thankfully, we're not limited in my conversation with Todd. Chief Fitzgerald, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. That the department has secured a apparatus that they can do traffic studies during winter, winter months as well.
Yeah, we have a new unit that's a pole mounted unit and it's actually was out on Bridge Street last week and now it's going to Forest. It should be out there today. Back out to Forest so we can measure any new impacts as a result of the stop signs, but it can be used year round. So now we can collect data in the winter months for and measure it versus the summer months as well.
Okay. Cheryl, could you make some comments about what the department is doing, because there's concern in town that as you're aware that the department's not doing enough. And I think it's important for the town to understand what your expectations are of your of your patrol officers and and where what what you've been doing to try to deal with the concerns that have been raised about traffic in the town.
Yeah, so thanks. Currently, we, as we all know, we have two patrols on a given shift. And that's two, you know, during the day, two in the evening and and two on the midnight shift. We've assigned a sergeant to oversee our traffic complaints and and enforcement. We've developed a tab under our website under forms to report a traffic problem. This allows residents to report ongoing traffic issues and it's generate automatic email generated to the traffic sergeant and also the supervisor of the shift, you know, as a person or the complainant has to add the time of day that, you know, that the traffic problem is occurring. So we'll email like, for instance, the four to midnight sergeant as well. Sergeant Louf has taken a a daily, made a daily log as part of our shift change and roll call procedures in regards to traffic enforcement and where that needs to be done on on a on a daily basis. And for instance, we are back out on Forest Street today and also Mill Street. Patrols normally do at least two hours of traffic enforcement per shift as time permits. Again, we have two offices on the street. If we get a a serious domestic call or an arrest and that 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 may take up the, you know, obviously the rest of the shift. So as time permits, most of the time, we're doing at least two hours of traffic enforcement a day. And that doesn't take into account the the daily morning and afternoon school zone traffic on Lincoln Street post. They are traffic posts on Lincoln Street.
Hold on one sec.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that what you just said is clear. Is that two hours per day? Or two hours per shift or two
Hours, two hours per shift. So each officer should do at least two hours of traffic enforcement per shift.
So each officer being in their own vehicle, that would total four hours per shift.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Three shifts a day.
Three shifts a day, twenty four hours a day. So last year, we had a traffic safety grant and that was given to us through EOP, the Executive Office of Public Safety. So that worked out pretty well, allowed us extra enforcement on the streets. We just reapplied for a second grant, which should come out any day now with approval for the funding that would allow us for to enforce for additional traffic events throughout the the winter and into next summer. So I think the first one begins at the end of this month with crosswalk enforcement. And it goes into impaired driving throughout the holidays. Speeding is in the spring and then the hands free cellphone enforcement next summer. So a-again, once that funding is approved So again, once that funding is approved, we'll, you know, make that announcement and put that out on, on social media. So I took a look at some of the numbers today. So as of taking into account this year, we've had 8,692 calls for service. And 793 motor vehicle stops since the beginning of the year. 422 of those stops have resulted in a written warning, a civil motor vehicle infraction, a criminal summons. Or, or an arrest or a combination of all. So that's more than 50, 50% of the stops are resulting in some sort of. Violation rather than just a verbal warning. And it should be known that a written warning is not just a piece of paper that someone is handed and then they drive away. So if you get a, a written warning in Manchester today, you have the next calendar year from, from. You know, today's date, you get three more written warnings or a combination of a civil motor vehicle infraction and a written warning. Within that year from today's date, it's an automatic 30-day suspension of, of the license. But most of the time, officers, when they, when they stop a vehicle. You know, they follow our, our department policy and our, and being an accredited agency, our department policy for traffic enforcement. Allows officers the discretion to give a verbal warning, issue written warnings. Give a civil motor vehicle infraction, but it gives them parameters on, on how to address certain cases. So for instance, a written warning is an alternative to a minor traffic offense. But it also takes into account certain things, such as the operator's driving record, the, the type of offense. The, 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 the traffic during the offense and, and, and so forth. So I just wanna reiterate, a written warning does not really, it's not just a piece of paper that someone is given. And, and then it's, you know, put in the glove box and, and they drive away. It, it's, it's recorded in our in-house system, it's recorded in the state system. So if then if they're stopped here in Manchester and then two weeks later they're stopped in Beverly. The, the Beverly officer would probably see that on, on their driving record. So with, with, with that said, I think the policy that Chuck has come up with along with our, our traffic counters. Is gonna, as Ann mentioned, to make, I think, everyone's life a little bit easier. So I hope we can get that into policy moving forward for the town. Gives us something to look at and measure the areas of concern. And hopefully appropriately address neighborhood issues as, as we move forward. So that's kinda what, where I'm at right now.
Any comments or questions for the chief?
So chief, just, this is Greg.
Yep.
So we have the two mobile traffic speed monitors.
Correct, yeah.
Correct. And then you have, we, we have the four stationary ones that just give your speed.
Yeah, so we, yes, that, that's correct, the four, four stationary ones. But the, the new traffic speed trailers can do the same thing as our new pole mounted unit and that will collect data as well.
Right, yeah. And those mobile ones you place around town based on request, based on.
Based on concern, yeah.
Yeah.
Are the comments, questions from the board?
So I'm sorry, just to. Yeah, just elaborate a little more. So of the, so on a typical day, we have 12 hours of, of speed patrol by, by officers.
As, as time permits, obviously.
Right, no, I understand, I understand. There are days when that doesn't happen based on other calls and, and priority needs. And so those, those 12 hours a day generated those 8,600 calls or 8,700 calls for service or?
No, those, those 80, 8,692 calls for service are just general calls. That's, that's what we've had since January 1st. So that could be a medical aid, that could be a burglar alarm or.
Oh, I see.
Combination.
Alright, so those 12 hours generate, 12 hours a day generated the 800 stops.
The 793 stops, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yep, alright, thank you. I'm just getting clarification.
Any other board member questions or comments for Todd?
I have a question, if I may. Um, it's. It's. I have a perception that we have. A problem with people speeding in town, but that's my perception. So if the numbers aren't. Corroborating that, what, what is the disconnect?
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure. Like, we've had incidents where we had requests for speed enforcement. We've put the, the, the traffic, at that time, it was the traffic tubes on the street. And we give the, the data back to the complainants and the complainants don't agree with the data. So I'm not 100% sure what's, what's, what's driving that. You know, typically, and sometimes, you know, if we sit on a road. You know, people are gonna go slow because they see a police cruiser. And, you know, most of the time. We don't see the speed that people are indicating that's happening.
Right. So what other, what other, if, if that's the case, and I, I know that. I've been driving down Pine Street doing the speed limit and I've had people either so close on my bumper. Or I've had them pass me on the double line. And this, it's, it's, it's disconcerting. Because my perception is that people are disregarding what the speed limit is. So, but if the, the numbers aren't showing that, if the studies aren't showing that. Then what other way can we? Try to. Address the concerns?
Uh, extra enforcement, maybe, more patrols. I think this policy that Chuck has come up with is, is gonna be part of that concern. Part of that reason to address those concerns. But, you know, but again, if I had the staff and the funding to put someone on traffic. You know, 16 hours a day, 20, 24 hours a day, each shift, then I would love to do that. But it's just, I, 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 I don't have the, obviously the staff or the funding at, at this point. But I think the policy is gonna help us mitigate some of those concerns.
Are you there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, sorry, my hearing aids stopped working and now my phone is not. I can't hear people. How's that?
Did you hear Todd's response? Did you hear Chief Fitzgerald's response to what you just said?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Is it possible to say again?
Yes, yeah, so, so, I mean, I, I think the policy that, that Chuck has, has come up with is gonna help us mitigate a lot of those concerns. I think, you know, maybe extra patrols, extra enforcement in the, in the areas that we do get complaints. Which we try and do, you know, on, on a, on a day, daily basis. But as I said, if I had someone, if I had the staff and the funding to put someone on to, you know. 16 hours a day or 24 hours a day to, you know, address some of these concerns and to totally dedicate them to, to, to traffic enforcement. You know, then I would absolutely love that. But unfortunately, we don't have that at this point.
It, would it, would it make any difference to temporarily write more tickets? I know it's, I know.
Yeah.
I know that's not an easy one.
Yeah, that's, I mean. You, you know, I mean, we. We cite based on our policy, you know, I hate to le, take the discretion away from the officer. It may help in, in the short term, I mean, but, you know, I don't know if we wanna be. Known as that department that's aggressive and unapproachable. Since we just had a recent discussion of community policing at your last meeting.
Well, that's, it's a, I, I think it's a safety issue if people. Are going.
You know, no, I agree, but, but, but then again, a, a written warning, pretty much, I feel. Accomplishes the same type of reaction from the public. Because most of the time, when we stop someone, it's probably their first time being stopped. And that pretty much. Curbs the future behavior. So can we write as many tickets as we want? Yes. Is that something that the board is directing me to do? Then, yeah, then, then we'll do it. But I'm not sure that's the correct approach.
So you don't get a lot of repeats?
No, I kinda looked at it today, briefly after my discussion with Jeff. And out of the last six months that I looked at, we had one repeat, but that was a repeat offender. Who was cited in another community.
Thank you.
So he took his speeding out of Manchester, is what you're saying?
Took his speeding out of Manchester, yes.
I think that if there's any direction that the board could. Suggest at this point, it's not the specifics. Of how many tickets. But it's keeping really good track of the data on. Not just the speed studies, but on citations. Citation slash warning slash citation. I know the warning is a citation, but warning or. Fine.
I mean, I, I believe we have that, but again, it sounds like a broken record going back to our records management system. It's very difficult to track that.
I, I understand. I understand. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? So is it feasible for the board members to get their comments in by Friday to? Chuck and Chief Fitzgerald? On the policy? Can I get a thumbs up, please? I'm just seeing eyes staring down. I know you're all watching the phone with the game on the internet. Just, just to make it clear, it's nine to nothing Red Sox and we're very happy about that.
And I mine in, I'm, I've submitted.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that, that if we can get that information in. Hopefully, we can incorporate any suggestions or changes and have a first reading at our first meeting in November. I understand that that's before bike and ped gets to weigh in, but we have a second reading. And they could see the update and clarity that the board selectmen has suggested. And they could make their own suggestion. That would allow us to have our. Finalization of the policy at our first meeting in December. Okay? Because I think the policy is really integral to what we're trying to address. And. Finding a good way to publish the information of the speed studies is also gonna be an important part of this. So that we have. We're providing data to the public about the concerns that they have concerning mitigation.
Jeff, just one quick quest, comment, actually. So the speed studies we've done are on our website under traffic studies. So if someone wants to take a look at those, they are on there.
Maybe what we could do is to. Through Tiffany, try and find a way of. Directing traffic towards that, so that people don't go to search.
Yeah, absolutely.
So. Either Greg or I, Greg, Greg or I will have a conversation with Tiffany about her ideas about how to do that. Okay, let's, let's move on. This is our. Since we've done the consent agenda, we have one last major topic in our agenda and that's. A COVID update. Regarding the mask mandate continuation and issues of enforcement. At the Board of Health joint meeting with the Board of Selectment on October 14th. The Board of Health voted to extend. The. Mask mandate for publicly accessed buildings, which includes businesses and public buildings like Town Hall. Until a meeting on. December 9. This was based on a lot of different. Aspects of information that they had collected and that have been collected by various members of the Board of Selectmen as well. Related to. Vaccination. Access. And. And current data within Essex County and within Manchester on actual cases. That's the furthest out, that point, December 9th, is the furthest to which. The mandate will be. Before the mandate will be reviewed. If there's changes in conditions, it's possible that the Board of Health may. Take this up at some time in their November meeting. So what came up in that discussion. Is the whole issue of. In other Board of Health. Public health orders. There is an enforcement component that's voted on at the same time as the order is made. And that there's no enforcement component made with this order. The one that exists since September 1st, or that was, that was initiated on September 1st and was voted on in August. This is not to. Attempt to be punitive towards people. But. To address the issue of a structure of enforcement. Of an existing public health order. It was my understanding that the meeting, the joint meeting we had, that this authority was something. It was my understanding that the meeting, the joint meeting we had, that this authority was something that was solely with Board of Selectmen. To set fines. Or set consequences. Excuse me. Town Council has since given the opinion that. This can happen through the Board of Selectmen or it can happen through the Board of Health. So. With that introduction, Greg, I'd like you to. Take any comments that you have about this and. And move into a discussion about how we're going to address enforcement.
So a few comments, thank you, a few comments is. So overall, I would say compliance is quite high in town. We are, we are not getting a very many complaints. We have had. A complaint, I guess, two complaints about one establishment in town. Where the owner and the employees were, were not always masking up. Police did follow up and have conversations with the manager and staff and. And that reminder seemed to certainly help at the time. And that compliance seemed to be better after that, but then relapses. In terms of, you know, enforcement mechanisms, the police are certainly willing and able. To help with all of this, they prefer not to, you know, not to, not to worry too much about. Mask enforcement. A lot of towns. Chief Fitzgerald has talked to other discounting parts, a lot of towns are handling or did handle when mask mandates were more prevalent. Did handle complaints about individuals not masking through a, through a trespass ordinance and, and, and rules. So if, if a, if a customer was continually flaunting the, the mask mandate at an establishment, that establishment could ask the police to intervene. And that would be handled through a trespassing order and fine. That doesn't address the issue of a, of a owner and the employees. And so if indeed you want to pursue. A stronger mechanism besides encouragement and reminders, then you could impose a fine structure. Town Council does feel that it's best that both boards were to, were to, were to adopt the fine structure. The legalities of, of those fines and a few areas that are a little ambiguous in state law in terms of authority. And one way to. Handle that ambiguity is to have both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health adopt a fine structure. So in terms of what that might be, you could obviously have a first verbal warning or written warning. To establishment that is, is not following the mandate. A second offense might incur a smaller fine, you know, is that, is that $25 to start off? Is it $50 to start off? A second. Or a third offense. You know, perhaps you double what your initial fine was. And then the third and repeating offense might be, you know, is that double again, or is it one and a half times? The second offense. Something along those lines is certainly within your purview. It would come under our general bylaw that allows. A non-criminal disposition of offenses, of violations, and basically it's the. Bylaw or local bylaw that allows ticketing. And that can again, be something that we can handle through, through the police department if that is the direction you wish to go. You know, the, the trend lines are, are fairly encouraging at this point. And like I say, I think compliance is fairly high in town. I, I understand the, the perspective that without, without enforcement, a mandate really is a, is a request or recommendation. And that to really make it a mandate, then sometimes you need that enforcement piece. I'm not convinced that, that we're at that level in terms of violators. But again, that's, that's a choice that you can make in consultation with the, with the Board of Health.
Okay, I think it's important to clarify some things other than just the structure of. Whatever enforcement there is. And that would include. What's the responsibility of? A business owner? And. What's the responsibility of a patron? In other words, who's, who's subject to enforcement?
Good for opinions?
Yep.
So I think a business owner should be responsible for their employees. They're the ones who tell them what to do. And I think. You don't, you can't require a business owner, it's not reasonable to. Find a business owner because something a patron does. That's where I think the responsibility lies.
Okay. All the board members?
Jeff, I have very conflicted feelings about this. On the one hand, I would. Wish that people would respect that a mandate is being done. To help people. And if. Some people are ignoring that, I, I, I'm very reluctant to getting into. Finding. I mean, I, I think if, if employers have employees, it's who refuse to wear masks. They're a little bit over a barrel at this point because it's hard enough to get. Employees. But then again. If the employees aren't wearing a mask, then it's the patrons who are going to be at risk. So what do we do? I, I, I truly am very. Torn over this.
Jeff?
Yes, Jeff?
Yep. So I, I agree with both Eli and, and, and also Becky on this, I think. With regard to patrons, I don't, I don't think we can involve fines, but. Or punishment, but I think that certainly an employer is responsible for his or her employees and should make sure that they are masked. I took a walk around town a couple of days or so ago to see just how many businesses had. Signs up with regard to masking and I'll say quite a few did, I'll say that the majority had. When I say majority, maybe 60% had the sign that the town has made up that they gave to all of the, all of the merchants. And then maybe another 20% had their own signs. And then there were probably 20% that didn't have any signs. Now, that's not necessarily reflective of the behavior going on in the establishments, but. I observed that in terms of what's, what's going on there. I'm very reticent to put together any kind of, of, of fine structure. I think that. It kind of goes against the revitalization initiative that we're, we're trying to encourage. Here in town and with, with the merchants and it's kind of like it's a bad faith sort of thing, especially when. The vast majority, I think, are, are, are being very good with regard to compliance for this. I'm wondering if maybe when I saw the signage was missing for, from several of the establishments. They should have a sign and maybe if there's some sort of offense or involved, they should have a large sign that says, we, you know, masks are, are required. We expect or we require our employees to wear masks. And we require our patrons to wear masks as well, just to kind of put a little pressure on. The employer perhaps to encourage or to let people know that their employees should be wearing masks also, so that might be kind of some. Informal pressure, but not, not a pecuniary one. So I, I'm leaning more in, in that sort of direction than any kind of fine structure at this point with regard to. Offenses.
I am concerned that the fine structure that Greg laid out. Is pocket change. I don't see anybody changing their behavior for a $50 fine unless we, unless we. Enforce it three times a day. I wish there were some way to publicly pillory the people. The business owners who tolerate their employees not masking or don't mask themselves. But maybe Tiffany would have an idea in that direction.
I'm not sure whether you're suggesting that Tiffany created public pillory?
She's got a fine public forum.
I don't, I don't, I don't think I want to go in that direction at all.
So I understand the. The, the reticence around fines and having, having to put together a structure. I guess my question. Would be. If we chose not to install actual fines or any sort of. Warning followed by fine structure. Is there a point where? John, you would reconsider that position? So for example, if, if, if businesses continue to. Draw complaints.
Something that doesn't involve fines per se, I mean, I, I just threw out the sign thing, or this put maybe a large sign, two feet by three feet or something. I can tell you the sign on, that's in front of Cape Ann Savings is a pretty large sign. I'd say it's about one and a half by two feet or something, but. That lets people know what the story is, but, and as I say, I put the statement on that our, our employees are required to wear masks so that. Patrons understand that the. Employer knows what the rules are. But yeah, I'd entertain something else, but I'm. At a loss for the creativity for that right now.
Yeah.
It's a tough area.
Jeff?
Yes.
Are there, are there guidelines or I thought if, and I, because I've heard some say that there are people who are exempt. And, and that's why some employees aren't wearing masks because they're exempt from wearing them. I thought if somebody claims a medical exemption, they're supposed to have. Proof of medical exemption, is that correct?
That would be whatever the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen required. Typically. A medical exemption in larger employers. Requires. A physician's letter stating. That the person is exempt. And. Based on certain criteria that wearing the mask. Would exacerbate a pre-existing condition without specifying the condition. For example.
Jeff, question?
Yes, Jeff.
For Greg, Greg, do we know what Salem's doing?
Salem continues with the mask mandate.
We know that. The question is enforced.
In terms of enforcement, I, I need to double check what, what they're doing on that. We can.
Curious.
We can certainly get that.
Hello?
Hello. Could you wait?
Hello?
Hello, could you just wait one minute? We're. Confining our discussion right now to the board. And, and then we'll open it up to the public.
So. Jeff?
Yes.
I actually just looked up the Salem. Mask mandate. Said. This emergency order shall be effective beginning Monday, August 23rd, 2021 to 12:01 a.m. Shall remain effective until November 13th, 2021. Unless notice is given by the Board of Health. This order will be extended to the extent necessary. This order shall be enforced by Board of Health officials. Penalties will be issued in accordance with municipal fines set forth in Sydney Ordinance, City Ordinance for $50 for the first offense, $150 for the second offense, and $300 for third and subsequent offenses. So. That's what Salem does.
And that's. Not specifying who pays the fine. So it assumes that the person who's paying the fines, the person who's not wearing a mask and refuses to put one on when asked.
One might presume so.
Okay, but I think we need to specify.
Can we get some more specifics?
Like what?
Like who's the one who's. Enforcing this? Who goes out and actually? Cite somebody.
They specifically said. On Salem. Said that it's the Board of Health officials.
This is an issue of having a public health agent.
Right.
In our community.
We don't have that.
We do not have a specified public health agent. And we do have. Two individuals who are contracted for restaurant inspections. And other health inspections. And if they go out and do an inspection. And see violations, a letter is sent out from the Board. Of Health saying you need to correct these violations. And if there's a repeat or it's not corrected within the time requested. Then. There may be a fine. There is a charge, which is. The charge of sending the health inspector out again to make sure that. Compliance has been achieved. This is much harder with. Masks. We don't have a public health agent to go out and. Observe. That behavior. So we would be relying on. So we would be relying on. Public complaints. Or the opposite, all the observations of officers who will call in the scene for. A concern about trespass. Yes, yes, Eli.
So I still see. Essentially two aspects of this. One is where. A business. And some employees are not complying and we get a complaint. And it could be. Employees of the business or. Regular customers, who knows? And we get a complaint coming into the Board of Health about that business. I agree that we probably don't have the. Staff at the Board of Health. And in the past, what we've done is the police have gone and talked to the business and. Presumably got it sorted out, but we did get. An actual written complaint. I think after one of those events. My inclination is if we did put in some sort of. Penalty that we should not put in a financial penalty on the first one, but it should be a warning. And if we persistently have issues, the second one, the second. Offense should carry a fine. Similar in stature to what Salem was doing. And I think that allows us to. Just not drop the hammer on people to just provide some guidance like, hey, we got this complaint. You really need to follow the rules here. And then if it just continues, then. Then we, you know, put some teeth into. And as far as patrons are concerned. Again, if the, I think the notion that they're trespassing and that you can be referred to the police as. A reasonable solution. Also, if somebody writes a letter to the Board of Health and says, you know, all the patrons in this place, none of them wear masks. The police can go and tell people. Same as they would with the employees, you know, you've got to wear masks and, and. It, I don't imagine that we're going to have a lot of that happening. I just don't really. But the option would be there. For the police to go and talk to people and give them warnings and if. If it's a repeat performance, give them fines.
So let me. See if I've grasped what you just said, Eli. Are you suggesting that tonight we do not create a fine structure?
No, I am suggesting that we do create a fine structure and suggesting for the first offense, we provide a warning. Second offense, we, we have an actual fine. Whether that amount is $100, $150 or. I'd, I'd be inclined to go with. Something like a, a $150 for the second offense, $300 for certain subsequent offenses. Hoping that we would never get to that point. And that a warning would be enough. And then it's not tremendously burdensome. It's just somebody going and telling something that somebody officially. You gotta follow. And that that enforcement could be done, would be done by the, the police. Referred as necessary by the Board of Health.
The food inspection. Idea. It, it seems to me that when a restaurant or a food establishment is found not to be following the Board of Health. Sometimes there's a sign that goes on the. Front of the building saying. This establishment has failed an inspection.
I don't believe that that's the case in Manchester. I have seen that in cities.
Yep. I just wondered if we could have, you know, if, if the places found not to be enforcing the mandate. Or positively every place that does enforce the mandate could have a sign saying. We support your health. Something that would alert the public.
Okay, I, I don't want to meander in this discussion too far. I'm still trying to get clarity on what triggers. A warning. Who confirms that that warning? Has been triggered? If we receive a public complaint. Clearly, education is the first step. With a warning. That there are consequences for further complaints. But we have no way of investigating complaints. I mean, the, the, the example that I gave about the food inspections. There's a food inspector who has state law around the handling of food. And. There are forms and formats and everything else. This is the inspection. These are the criteria of the inspection. You met all these. You didn't meet these. That's a violation. We don't have that for, for a mask mandate. And we have no way of investigating a public complaint. To confirm. The details of that complaint or to. Say that those. Their complaint lacks validity.
Why? Why is it not the case that if, I mean, the, the way the food inspector would. Go about that as though there was a complaint from somebody to say, go and look at the circumstances and they say, yeah, sure enough, there are issues. Why is it any different with? Mask complaint? If somebody writes a complaint saying. Employees are, are never masked or, or most of them, the patrons are, are never masked every time I walk by there. Police go and they look in the window and they look in the door and they go walk into the place. There's lots of people without masks. They go like, yep. Sure enough, they're not wearing masks. I don't see that that's really. An issue.
Well. I, I, Jeff, if I may, yeah, I think Eli has a point that. Information has to be corroborated by somebody with standing. You can't, you can't just go, you know, on what some, you know, what a private citizen says. If a policeman comes by and sees that's an issue, or they may come by because. Somebody has complained and they're there. And of course, then it becomes a he said, she said, no, he wasn't, no, he was, you know. Could be difficult, but I would not, I would not base. Warning strictly on a note from somebody from the public. I think there has to be some legal follow up.
Excuse me, this is Paula Polofilius from the Board of Health.
Good evening, Paula.
Hi, I, I know you're not taking.
Yeah.
Comments, but I think.
That's fine. I, I didn't recognize because you came in on your phone. Go ahead.
So the board has. Responded to the complaint by sending Bobby Cody, our food inspector. And so we have. Already. Started to address. Of course, this is to officially confirm the basis of the complaint. We're waiting for the report to come back. But that was how we handled it. We sent our, our contracted food inspector. To address the complaint. If we have a.
To address.
Structure.
To, to address the mask complaint.
Correct.
Thank you.
And similar to what you were already discussing, if an establishment. Breaks any other kind of rule, then they, they do, they have a chance to rectify it. And then if they can't rectify it, then they're fined. At this point, I don't really. I don't really see it being that complicated to either confirm or deny that. People are or are not wearing masks, or if they are not wearing masks, if they have a medical reason that they can substantiate why they're not wearing the mask. Then we would handle it like any other. Any other in, in, infraction on the, on the rules.
So Jeff, I have a question for. I don't know you, Greg, or maybe Paula. Are we deliberating something that is? The Board of Health's purview?
It's the purview of both the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen.
So then.
When, when is the next time that the Board of Health is meeting? Paula?
It would be.
The 28th?
The 28th, yes.
Okay. And you have your hand up.
Yeah, my question is through you for, for Paula. Would you send your contracted food inspectors to? Establishments that don't. Sell or serve food?
Well, the contracted food inspector goes to any place that has a pool to make sure the pool is running the way it's supposed to. She does do inspections for things other than food.
So she would be able to go into any public establishment and, and. Investigate.
Well, I think we have to do a little research on that. For instance, if we got a complaint that people in the hardware store aren't wearing masks. I don't think the food inspectors ever had a reason to go to the hardware store. They have, she has the reason to go in many, many different establishments in town, but. Like the bookstore, the hardware store. A hair salon.
Town hall.
Town hall. I guess we would have to look into that. We could call the Department of Public Health and do a little research on that. Because there are other communities that do have mask mandates, so I'm, I'm, I wouldn't be surprised if the State Department of Public Health does have some guidance on that.
Okay. I'm going to make a suggestion in terms of this. Discussion tonight. I don't think that we have clarity of purpose. And. I'm going to suggest that. We not vote on. A fine structure that we don't know how it will be enforced. Raising it. As Eli has suggested. As something that the police go and check out on. That raises a whole lot of issues around police investigations. And there's a, there's a whole set of laws around how police conduct an investigation if there's a civil or criminal complaint. We don't have that for public health with the police. If the complaint is a trespass complaint for a non-compliant patron. That's clearly within the purview of the police. But I think that we need to get clarity around how this is being enforced in areas. And if from the Department of Public Health, State Department of Public Health in other communities. So. I don't feel prepared. To. Entertain a motion or. Move on this because I think we need to have a very clear policy. We're, we're moving into an area that's. It's different than. Other areas in which fines are imposed. For non-compliance around building structures or non-compliance around. Food service establishments. Non-compliance of around. Septic systems. If someone on the board wants to make a clear motion. On this matter tonight. Obviously, we would vote on that. But I, I don't feel prepared to vote tonight.
I think Jeff, at this point, I'm personally probably a little bit too tired to articulate a clear. Motion and, and be able to argue it and support it. We do have some differing opinions on the board about. How we want to approach it. I don't think any of us wants to be particularly punitive, but we still have some different opinions here, I think.
Yes. Any other board members want to weigh in on what I just said?
I would like to make one other comment on this general topic. We leave it though.
Go ahead.
So this is actually. A comment. About the Board of Health, we've seen a certain amount of traffic.
About the Board of Health, we've seen certain amount of traffic. Critical of the um mask mandate. And uh critical of of how it was arrived at. And suggesting that um. It wasn't based on rationale. So the Board of Health and that they have a number of different jobs. Some of it is, a lot of it is around septic work, some of it is around food inspections, I'm not going to cover all of it. Some of it is um a a annual testing for uh triple E and West Isle virus. And when we appoint people to the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen. Tries its best to put together a board whose members have. Area expertise in areas that cover a lot of those different different items, so they maybe they have some. Expertise about septic systems or engineering or um contracting related to that, maybe they. Or and certainly, we we try to put some medical types on those boards and and currently on that board. Especially given uh their experience with COVID, we made a point of putting putting some medical people on there that we thought would be have some relevant experience. One of them is a virologist. Who's who's got a postdoc and has been a person assistant professor at multiple um. Medical schools, including BU Medical School. Currently, um. Is the. Assistant Associate Director of Virology at the company called Moderna. Another one of the members of the Board of Health is uh I guess an MD, a medical doctor, is a gastroenterologist. And is also um associated with a company that is working on mobile COVID testing. So these are people who clearly have expertise in the area that we're concerned about and we're relying on. We have been relying on their guidance in part throughout all this, so. They're not the type of people to. React emotionally and just uh make decisions based on their feelings, they're experts in the field. And so I just want to uh offer that support for the Board of Health, it's not something that's necessarily really well publicly understood. But that board is constructed to have the expertise on it to help provide us and guide us on these particular topics and it's that the expertise is certainly there. So that's my comment.
Thank you for that comment, Eli. I strongly support what you just said and strongly support. The deliberations that our Board of Health has gone through. And. Making decisions that are based on reviews of studies. Current conditions in Manchester, conditions um. In Essex County and in Massachusetts. There's, there's a lot of. Very serious thought that has gone into decisions that. The Board of Health has made. Regarding COVID. And all the other areas that they're involved in, which is expansive. There's also. Staffing for the Board of Health that has. A tremendous amount of experience. And dealing with. Matters such as we're discussing tonight, so. Okay, I I would like to move on. Um I would like to return to this on November first. And. Try and. See if in between time we can get the information that we need to understand. How this structure could be. Provided for enforcement. It's not just a question of having a fine structure, I think it's more a question of how that gets applied. And uh. I know I'm going to be digging in on this and I'll work with anybody else on the board who wants to do that. Okay. Any last comments, questions?
Just a question, I guess, Jeff. Would it be valuable or is there interest in doing another joint meeting with the Board of Health? Tell you a law on their. Uh twenty eight, ten twenty eight meeting?
I I think I think that uh. I can discuss that with Paula and um if our board is. Uh wanting to do that, um and their board is wanting to do that, we could do that. These are, these are long. Discussions and. They don't go for four hours like we do and have and shouldn't. So. But I I'd like to to weigh out a little bit with with the Chair of the Board of Health.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, we have. Dealt with the consent agenda, public notifications, we have the Halloween schedule. Um which is posted as part of the packet so that the public can look at it. And we have town administrator report.
It would be brief. Just to let other board members know, um Jeff and I had a meeting with um members of of Sonic Lodge. And uh we're meeting to reaffirm our mutual interest in pursuing a potential. Deal of some sort that might allow us to have a senior center operate at the Mason's Building as an alternative. To other options that we we have discussed. So as I indicate in my notes to you, um to the back in the court of the Masons to. Clarify what their interests are and what they might be willing to sell. And sell and or share. And so we will wait to hear back from them. On what they would like to propose. Concerning the forty B, uh as you know, that application to the ZBA has has been submitted. They will be holding their first hearing on the twenty sixth of October. They are gearing up, we're hoping to get confirmation, technical assistance. From Mass Housing Partnership, service that they provide to communities that are dealing with forty B applications. Um and we also have legal counsel. Gearing up as well. As as things start to evolve and the hearings get underway, uh you should be thinking about how you would like to. Provide input to this, to the zoning board, you have that ability and can give testimony to. To the board. To the zoning board, as well as how best to coordinate um testimony from from other boards and committees in town. As well as um citizen groups. So just putting it out there that you should be thinking about how best to do that and how we should be uh moving forward. Um on the on the process and your involvement with that. Um so we can talk more about that at your next meeting, I I suspect that the first hearing will be primarily devoted to some logistics. Of the hearing process and perhaps a a general overview from the applicant. For the proposal, I don't anticipate them getting into a lot of substantive issues at that first hearing. So there is, there is time. The one comment I that is more time sensitive is the question of whether or not to. Make an argument for safe harbor. To 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 the state. And even though our um annual progress on adding new units to the subsidized housing inventory. Uh is is now um up to that automatic safe harbor, uh there's perhaps an opportunity to argue that. That the efforts that have taken place over the last few years uh warrant consideration for safe harbor. So again, that's something to think about, um that has a deadline of fifteen days after. The October twenty sixth hearing, um so that puts us um. A week and a half into into November. So.
That would be a letter that the Board of Selectmen would write?
No, it actually.
Farber, is that what the ZBA would do?
It it actually comes from the ZBA.
Yep.
Um but you you would want, you potentially could have that conversation with the ZBA.
Sure.
But lastly, uh. So frustrating news is is that we are victim of um some supply chain issues with. Technical equipment, the AV equipment that we had hoped to have all installed by now, uh to have hybrid meetings. We have received everything but one critical part and the vendor actually thinks he has a lead on borrowing a part. Until ours uh or or does come in, so I'm hoping to get an update from him tomorrow on that so that we can move forward with. With boards, meeting in person with participants, residents, citizens. Uh participating virtually, so that hybrid approach. So stay tuned on that, I hope to have more information uh the end of this week. But that's, that's all I need to go for now, thank you.
Any questions for Greg? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm not going to ask for discussion. Roll call vote, Ms Harrison?
Yes.
Ms Jakes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr Brown?
Yes.
Mr Bowling?
Sorry.
Yes, I almost said Mr Eli. And the chair votes yes. Thank you, thank you for all the people who are in here tonight, thank you to Gail. Thank you to Greg. Red Sox nine three.
Good night.
Certainly, goodbye.